Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. Today is November 21st, 2023. This is the meeting of the Seattle City Council, and I'm now calling it to order. I'm Deborah Juarez. And with that, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Musqueta.
Present.
Councilmember Nelson.
Present.
Councilmember Peterson.
Present.
Councilmember Sawant.
I know she's here.
Thank you. Councilmember Strauss.
Present.
Councilmember Herbald. Councilmember Lewis.
Present.
Councilmember Morales.
Here.
And Council President Juarez.
Here.
Nine present.
Thank you. We have no movement on the agenda. We have no presentations today, so we're going to go right into public comment. So we are still doing the hybrid and in-person public comment. And my understanding is we have 85 remote and 53 in-person, and that may change. So let's see where we're at then. Everyone will have one minute. And we are going to start with the remote speakers first. But before we begin, I'm going to hand off to Madam Clerk for the instructions and what we hope to hear from everybody today. And hopefully, we can all agree to disagree, and we can be respectful of other people's opinions and basically move forward with some dignity and in a good way. So with that, Madam Clerk, can you please go ahead with the instructions? Be respectful. Yes, thank you.
Hello, Seattle. We are the Emerald City, the city of flowers and the city of goodwill, built on indigenous land, the traditional territory of the Coast Salis peoples. The Seattle City Council welcomes remote public comment and is eager to hear from residents of our city. If you would like to be a speaker and provide a verbal public comment, you may register two hours prior to the meeting via the Seattle City Council website. Here's some information about the public comment proceedings. Speakers are called upon in the order in which they registered on the council's website. Each speaker must call in from the phone number provided when they registered online and use the meeting ID and passcode that was emailed upon confirmation. If you did not receive an email confirmation, please check your spam or junk mail folders. A reminder: The speaker meeting ID is different from the general listen line meeting ID provided on the agenda. Once a speaker's name is called, the speaker's microphone will be unmuted, and an automatic prompt will say, "The host would like you to unmute your microphone." That is your cue that it's your turn to speak. At that time, you must press star six. You will then hear a prompt of, "You are unmuted." Be sure your phone is unmuted on your end so that you will be heard. As a speaker, you should begin by stating your name and the item that you are addressing. A chime will sound when 10 seconds are left in your allotted time as a gentle reminder to wrap up your public comments. At the end of the allotted time, your microphone will be muted, and the next speaker registered will be called. Once speakers have completed providing public comment, please disconnect from the public comment line and join us by following the meeting via Seattle Channel Broadcast or through the listening line option listed on the agenda. The council reserves the right to eliminate public comment if the system is being abused or if the process impedes the council's ability to conduct its business on behalf of residents of the city. Any offensive language that is disruptive to these proceedings or that is not focused on an appropriate topic as specified in council rules may lead to the speaker being muted by the presiding officer. Our hope is to provide an opportunity for productive discussions that will assist our orderly consideration of issues before the council. The public comment period is now open, and we will begin with the first speaker on the list. Please remember to press star six after you hear the prompt of, "You have been unmuted." Thank you, Seattle.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And I understand we're going to start with former council member, Mr. Nick Locata. Nick, you got a star six. There you are. Star six, you're... I can see you're there. I see Mr. Locata is not unmuted, so it's star six. And then, wait a minute.
Shall we move to the next speaker, Council President, and come back?
Let's do that. Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Our first remote speaker is Dennis Sills.
Mr. Sills?
Councilmember. Hello, councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on this year's proposed budget. My name is Dennis Sills, and I work at Plymouth Housing. Earlier this week, Plymouth CEO Karen Lees sent a letter expressing thanks for the great work you've done on the mayor's initial budget proposal and asking you to vote yes on its final passage. 9.5% adjustments added to many human services contracts will help our homeless neighbors and enable providers like Plymouth to provide wraparound services to improve wellness and remain safely housed. Our workforce is at the front lines of the housing and fentanyl crisis. This budget helps them move towards wage equity. Lastly, Plymouth Housing is a member of the Housing Development Consortium that has weighed in on impact fees being considered today. Plymouth supports HDC's perspectives. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Zoe Amir.
All right.
Hello, my name is Zoe Amir. I'm a member of Socialist Alternative. I'm here to demand that the city council vote yes to pass the resolution calling for a ceasefire in Gaza and to end military funding for Israel. The city of Seattle pays to train our police officers with the Israeli Defense Force. We must also take control of our own budget and end the deadly exchange in our own city. So I commend activist and councilmember Sawant's office on winning a $20 million increase to the Amazon tax for mental health counselors in schools. With the strength of a movement, we can stop funding wars and instead fund essential services. It's the Democratic Party funding the genocide of thousands, so it's Democrats who must step up and end this relationship. A call for a ceasefire without a call to end military funding is hollow. Vote yes with no amendments.
Our next speaker is Bradley Nordstrom.
Hi, my name is Bradley Nordstrom. I'm speaking today on behalf of the Seattle For Everyone Coalition, and I'm commenting on Council Bill 120635 related to transportation impact fees. We oppose the comprehensive plan amendments. Our members hold a variety of views on transportation impact fees, and some of our members have even supported these in other contexts. But we do agree that now is the wrong time to be considering new fees on housing, even if this specific council action doesn't immediately implement the fees. Our primary concern is around the chill this would have on housing growth. As our region continues to struggle with high housing costs, Seattle should be removing barriers to housing creation and not putting more up. So we believe the passing of this bill, even without amendments, would tip the scale towards transportation impact fees without fully understanding the trade-offs or the other options that we could use to fund. So we just ask the Seattle City Council to delay the current consideration and synchronize a broader conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jennifer Ives.
Hello, my name is Jennifer. I'm a Day Three resident. I am here to encourage you to support the ceasefire resolution. Rayyan, Nian, Salam, Vain, Yasmin, Maria, Ayesha, Rahima, Mohammed, Tia, Baha, Rakan, Musk, Ahmed, Moaz, Kees, Nabil, Alma, Misk, Bilal, Abdul, Tahani, Mohammed, and Mustafa are the first names of 25 of the victims of the gods of genocide that the United States is currently supporting with funds and military resources. None of those 25 boys or girls ever reached their first birthdays. We are actively enabling ethically reprehensible and morally repugnant international war crimes with our silence and our tax dollars. If your conscience is not enough to move you to support Councilmember Sawant's ceasefire resolution, may the words of your constituents be enough. Shame on you, shame on this council, shame on me, and shame on all of us, as long as we close our eyes and plead ignorance. Support the fucking ceasefire resolution. I yield the rest of my time.
My name is Barbara Finney, a retired RN hospital worker.
I'm calling on council Democrats to vote yes on Councilmember Sawant's, excuse me, resolution for a ceasefire in Gaza and an end to U.S. military funding for Israel without watering it down. And Council President Juarez, I request you put this resolution back at the top of the agenda where it was originally. From Chris Hedges' article, "Israel's War on Hospitals", "Israel is," quote, "Israel is systematically and deliberately destroying Gaza's medical infrastructure. Israel has shut down 21 of Gaza's 35 hospitals, including Gaza's only cancer hospital. Soon there will be no health facilities left. This is by design," end quote. "A ceasefire is essential for a lasting..." "And for a lasting ceasefire, the root causes of the war must be addressed. An end to the occupation of Palestinian lands and U.S. military funding that is making this war..."
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sujata Ramne.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, my name is Sujata Ramne. I'm a member of Coalition of Siati Indian Americans. The council must vote yes on Councilmember Sawant's resolution on Israel and Gaza without any watering down, including making this the first item on the agenda. A ceasefire without ending war mongering U.S. military aid to Israel and without ending the occupation is kicking the can down the road and honestly infantilizing the global anti-war movement. Do not take us for idiots. Everyone knows Joe Biden's approval has tanked because of his handling of the situation. If you do not vote yes, you too will rightfully be relegated to political oblivion come the next election cycle. Vote yes today. Thank you.
Next speaker is Jared Maddox.
Hi, my name is Jared Maddox. I live in Ravenna in northeast Seattle, commenting on Resolution 32118. And yeah, I'm joining all those who have also commented. As a proud Seattleite, I've been proud and thankful of the ways that Seattle residents and its council have a history of defending all people's right to liberty and life. And I want to urge the council, especially my council member, Alex Peterson, to call, to echo the call that Atlanta City Council has already supported for a ceasefire, standing up for the rights of the Palestinian people. I want to say that this is an opportunity for y'all in the council to make it clear to the Arab, Muslim, and Palestinian residents in Seattle that their lives matter, as do all of the lives of the people who share their identities. This is all...
Thank you. Our next speaker is Joe Cunsler.
Hi, thank you, Seattle City Council, for once again taking up an issue that's not in your jurisdiction regarding Gaza. Right now, Prime Minister Netanyahu and his cabinet are debating, wait for it, a ceasefire resolution in return for hostages released, which is what I believe Councilmember Musqueta and other thoughtful moderates want. I have yet to hear any condemnation of Hamas. I have yet to hear any condemnation of the tearing down of posters of the kidnapped, and that is anti-Semitic. In fact, today, Hannah Keatsar made the ultimate sacrifice as a prisoner of war held by Hamas, and yet no one has mentioned her name until now. I really hope that people realize that the Jews are watching this. There are talks of boycotts of Seattle, which will hurt low-income workers. If you go ahead with this, though, I encourage you not to vote on this resolution. Am Israel chai? God bless America and solve the Ukraine, because you're not going to take terms by effing...
Our next speaker is Linaya May.
Hello, I'm Linaya. I'm a renter in District Three. So often over the last few months, I've heard the council say, "Well, we have to do something, and that's better than doing nothing." So why is it that when Councilmember Sawant put forth the ceasefire resolution a few weeks ago, none of you did anything to second her call? Silence is complicity right now. You have constituents who are in pain whose humanity demands them to mourn the more than 10,000 souls lost in little more than a month. Instead of acknowledging the pain our community is in, this council has focused on giving more and more money to the Seattle Police Department, which is trained with the Israeli Defense Force. From Seattle to Gaza, more violence is not the solution, not the violent threat of incarceration for people with substance abuse disorder, and not the violent ethnic cleansing of indigenous people, which now I think about it applies pretty well in both places. I'm asking you to vote yes on the ceasefire resolution for the sake of our community, to end the violence, and to affirm your humanity. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Anna-Lay Avzali.
My name is Anila Avzali, and I'm a District One resident. I'd love to see a resolution passed that helps end the occupation and military funding of Israel, but I join those Palestinians supporting the amended resolution by Musqueta, Herbald, and Juarez as a way to pass something that addresses immediate urgent needs. Over 20 years ago, I visited Gaza, and in a refugee camp that had been repeatedly bombed, we heard more bombs. A five-year-old child came to reassure me that the bombs were far away. How many times had he been bombed that he knew the difference in the sound? That memory remains with me as I think about all the children now being bombed at an unimaginable scale. More children have been killed in Gaza in the last six weeks than in all the armed conflicts in the world for the last three years combined. We desperately need a ceasefire now. That has to be a priority, and I appreciate the council members working with Palestinian community members and others to come up with an amended resolution that can hopefully pass and help us use it to persuade our members of Congress to do what's morally right and on the right side of history.
Thank you. We're now moving to the in-person speakers, and the first in-person speaker is Emily MacArthur. Emily will be followed by Natalie Bailey. Emily MacArthur. Natalie Bailey.
They're coming.
Emily MacArthur.
My name's Emily MacArthur. I'm a member of District Two, and I'm here to support Councilmember Shama Sawant's resolution demanding not just a ceasefire, but an end to the occupation and an end to U.S. funding for military aid to Israel. 92% of the weapons used by Israel and Palestine come from the U.S. This is not a secondary issue. It is not something that can be swept under the rug. Furthermore, while I think that it's an absolutely wrong approach to say that we need to water down our approach, there are millions of people across the globe who are out on the streets demanding action against what's happening in Gaza. The anti-war movement is growing. We are shutting down bridges. We are shutting down intersections. Now is not the moment for the movement to retreat so that we can provide cover for Biden and the Democrats. We demand the strongest possible resolution, and we demand that this resolution be moved to the first item on the agenda because the budget is not a controversial issue today. The issue everyone is here to talk about is Gaza.
Our next speaker is Natalie Bailey, followed by Razwan Samad.
Hello, my name is Natalie Bailey. I'm a member of Socialist Alternative. Thank you, socialists, Councilmember Shama Sawant, and community members and working people for bringing this resolution forward. I demand that all Democrats vote yes on Councilmember Shama Sawant's resolution without any watering down, including moving it to the first item. As many of you know, the council, when Councilmember Sawant brought forward a resolution on verse seven, not one of the Democrats was willing to even second the motion for a resolution against the war, let alone vote yes on the resolution. We have another chance to be on the right side of history. Don't water down this resolution. It's crucial for a lasting ceasefire that the root cause of war be addressed. That is why Sawant's resolution calls not only for a ceasefire, but also for the end of occupation of Palestinian lands and the U.S. military funding that is making this war possible. I have serious problems with Musqueta, Herbald, and Juarez and any so-called leaders who pursue this backward strategy of admitting defeat when the fight has barely begun. The war in Gaza will never be ended on a basis of such...
Thank you. The next speaker is Razwan Samad, followed by Cliff Cawthorn. Razwan Samad.
My name is Razwan Samad. Whenever I think about all those dead Palestinian children, my whole body shivers, and tears start floating from my eyes. Whenever I see my 20-month-old grandson, I hold him tight and think about when our president supported the genocide of Palestinian people. Then what will stop him or people like-minded him to kill my families and my children here? It's not that they haven't done it before. So for God's sake, we have to stand up together for humanity's sake. If you don't have humanity, then you must be evil. We will fight for our children here and in Palestine and all over the world. I'll cite a few paragraphs I written by Zain Azam. Write my name on my leg, Mama. Don't add my number like when I was born on the address of our home. I don't want to go to listing as a number. I have a name.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Our next speaker is Cliff Cawthorn, followed by Joan Wright. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Council President, I can't get him to stop.
All right, well, let's just, we will... I do not want to have anyone removed for disruptive behavior. Sir, we need, we have over 100 people that want to speak today. So let's just wait. Security, perhaps we could have a talk with the gentleman?
All right. Hello, councilmembers. My name is Cliff Cawthorn. I am the Advocacy and Policy Manager for Habitat for Humanity of Seattle King Kaitas Counties. As you know, I've testified before in opposition to transportation impact fees, and I'm here today again to testify in opposition to CB 120635. We need housing now. Talia, one of our homebuyers and advocacy volunteers, works as a service provider for a low-income housing organization. She couldn't afford to buy a home for her family in this housing market until they joined our program. Now she's on her way becoming a Habitat homeowner for the first time in her life. The lack of access to stable housing is choking this housing market, hurrying working people like Talia. Transportation impact fees are only going to make the problem worse. While we try our best, we can't do it alone. While this won't affect our permanently affordable housing projects, it wouldn't, while they wouldn't be immediately impacted, this is going to impact the entire housing continuum. I ask you to oppose CB 120635 in transportation impact fees and choose a housing future where everyone has a safe and decent place to live and affordable place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Joan Wright, followed by Logan Swan.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Joan Wright. I'm a union tech worker with OPIU and an activist with Workers Strike Back. I demand that all Democrats vote yes on Councilmember Sawant's resolution without any watering down and make it the first item on the agenda. The Israeli state's occupation, enabled by billions of dollars, every, of U.S. dollars every year, is what needs to end because that is the root of the crisis. Among the massive protest movements across the globe and here in Seattle, I had the opportunity to join high schoolers at a school walkout at Franklin High School. They booed so-called progressive politicians like Bernie or AOC, who said she would vote for Iron Dome funding. They condemned Biden for funding war crimes. Students and workers alike know that the Democratic Party and so-called progressive politicians are not on the right side of history, just like the Democrats here in City Council, not one of whom would second Councilmember Sawant's resolution, which is the only one that calls for an end to military funding. Right, yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Logan Swan, followed by Shirley Henderson. Logan Swan.
Hi, my name is Logan Swan. I'm a union ironworker here in Seattle and a renter in District Two. I want to thank Shama Socialist Council Office for bringing forward the strongest resolution demanding ceasefire and an end to U.S. funding for Israel's atrocities. And I demand a yes vote from the Democrats. Biden's pushing for $14 billion more for Israel's instruments of murder and oppression, and this is on top of nearly $4 billion the U.S. donates every year for Israel's rockets and guns. This would amount to over a fifth of federal education spending at its current amount, nearly a fifth of expanding the child tax credit, you know, that slash child poverty, twice more than Biden's proposed increase of spending on housing when we're faced with a housing crisis and bills more than the annual budget provided for the Department of Labor. The priorities of your party are clear, that our government can't keep its us housed or our roads and bridges maintained, but it has...
Thank you. Our next speaker is Shirley Henderson, followed by Jamal Sumel.
The crimes of the political establishment, of the imperialism of the United States. So yes, you do have to take a stand here. Otherwise, you're complicit. And how can you say you represent us when you won't even show up to work?
I don't know what to do.
Sorry, Madam Clerk. Apparently, people can't allow people to speak. I do not want to have to have security intervene. Sir, please, we'll take a moment.
Anything you're saying either.
Okay, let's just settle down then. Okay.
My name is Shirley Henderson, and I'm a renter in District Three. And I, like so many here today, demand that all Democrats vote yes on Sawant's resolution without any watering down. If Democrats call for a ceasefire but also fail to demand an end to U.S. military aid and an end to the occupation, then you're only paying lip service to the pressure of our movement that's here today to say you are against the war, but on the other hand, you're still propping up the very things that perpetuate the root causes of this war, namely, the U.S. funding of Israel's state's brutal occupation and apartheid policies. This exposes the real role played by Democrats, providing cover for the Biden administration, which has blood on its hands. It's also shameful that council Democrats refuse to share their intended amendments with Councilmember's office, Councilmember Sawant's office, despite repeated asking. Also, many of us are here today because we're sickened of the living hell Palestinians are living in in Gaza, and we ask that this item be moved to the top of the agenda where it belongs. Working people have come out today. It's not easy for us to be out here, and you haven't even showed up for this important amendment.
All right, you know, we may, hold up. Let's, don't call anyone else. Let's take a moment here. First of all, I want to see if Mr. Locata was still on the line. My understanding is that he... Mr. Locata? Do not see his tile. All right, so we will be on standby for Mr. Locata. Madam Clerk, how are you doing?
We've got three more in person to hit our 10. If we could please just get through it, that would be great.
Okay, so what I would like to...
Jamil Sumen. Sumen. Jamil Sumen.
Salaam alaikum.
Yes.
Peace, love, harmony. My name is Jamil Sumeman. I'm a local artist and organizer here in Seattle. I'm sure the council knows me by another name, but I came surprisingly as myself today. And I want to support the resolution by Councilmember Sawant. And the reason I want to, I think almost all of us want a ceasefire, but I think what's important is that we have to emphasize that we need to end the occupation and free the Palestinian people. This is very important, and from what I'm hearing, there is a, you know, possible amendment to this that will deter us from that mission. And I want the council to really consider that if that's what we really want to be about. Seattle has a tendency to lead progressively in this country, and we can make a drastic change by making the right choice today. About this situation, vote on yes. I love you. Vote on, yes, I love you, Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Thank you for your kind words. Madam Clerk, I understand Mr. Locata is back.
Followed by Sonia Ponath.
Madam Clerk, thank you. Can you hold up one sec? We have Mr. Locata back. So, Nick, it's star six. I can see your tile. Okay, so, Madam Clerk, how many, when are we switching?
We have two more, two more in-person speakers to hit our mark of 10.
Okay. Well, I see Mr. Locata is not unmuted yet, so let's finish up with our two speakers in chambers for one minute, and then we'll go to our remote callers. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
All right, our next speaker is Ice Candor, no last name, followed by Sonia Ponath.
Hello, I just wanted to start off by appealing to everyone's humanity here. Sorry about that. I just want to try to appeal to everyone's humanity here and remind everyone why we are here and what we're voting for. Every time, every day, every minute, we have children being blown up to bits, and at what point do we say no and enough's enough? To vote no on this resolution is to approve of the genocide that's currently going on, to approve that it's okay to kill these children. And at what point do we say no? The reality right now is to vote no on this amendment to end the Gazan, to get the ceasefire going, the blood's on your hands if you say no. And at what point? Children should matter in these days, and it's a shame.
Our next speaker is Sonia Ponath. Sonia, yeah.
Hi, I'm Sonia Ponath. Two weeks ago, I called in and asked you to vote yes on Suwon's resolution and not water it down, but none of you were even willing to second the motion to discuss it. Let me tell you, the anti-war movement is nothing but growing. It's going to get bigger, and you were too cowardly to show any leadership. We are here because we are sickened by the devastation Palestinians are suffering due to this bombing campaign by Israel funded by the U.S. government and our tax dollars. I want people listening to know that it's really clear to me that the Democrats put this Gaza resolution on at the end of the agenda because they know we took time off to be here, and they would rather we're not here when they vote on this. I'm also deeply disturbed that there's a new substitute resolution that fails to demand an end to the occupation and, very super importantly, the end of military aid to Israel to the tune of $3.8 billion every year. All of this is so profoundly undemocratic. Vote yes on Suwon's more powerful resolution now, no watering down. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Samaru. I've been here in this country for over 40 years.
Excuse me, sir, it's not your turn.
We have been.
Sir, sir, okay, I don't want to have to ask security, please wait your turn. We need to go to the remote folks who are on the line.
We'll call you. If you're on the list, we will call you. Thank you, thank you. Our first remote speaker is Greg Smith.
Mr. Smith? There you are.
This is Greg Smith, a resident of District 3, and I'll be commenting on the proposed impact fee. I moved to Seattle six years ago. The whole time I've been in Seattle, I've been hearing that homelessness is a crisis, homelessness is an emergency, that we have to do something about homelessness. All I've learned about homelessness is that homelessness is a housing problem, and the studies show that there's a shortage of housing in all price points, not just the affordable housing that people focus on. We also know that increasing fees on new housing decreases the amount of housing built. After six years of living in Seattle, I realize that the reason Seattle never makes much progress on homelessness is that the Seattle government keeps passing bills like this impact fee. Vote no on impact fees and begin to make some progress on homelessness. Thank you.
Our next remote speaker is Lindsay Lozowski.
Let's see if she's, Lindsay, go ahead. Go ahead, Lindsay.
Can you hear me?
Yep, we can.
Okay, great. Sorry about that. My name is Lindsay Lozowski, and I live in District 6. I urge the council to support and vote to approve Resolution 32118 and call for a ceasefire in Gaza, condemn the actions of Israel, and end the occupation for good. As a disabled Jewish person, I know how crucial it is to support marginalized and oppressed groups. The Palestinians deserve such support from the council. If we don't act now during an active genocide, when will the council ever speak up for oppressed peoples? We urge you to represent the constituents who you actually serve, otherwise, we don't live in a democracy. How can we sit here and send more money to the state of Israel when the people of this city are actively struggling to live day to day? I urge you to consider why we can't find a way to use this money to fund crucial healthcare services and other necessary services. I'm absolutely disgusted by your continued silence on this issue and urge you to use your voices for real change and not complacency. Your inaction does not represent Jewish values. Ceasefire now.
Our next remote speaker is Ahmet Mustafa.
Hi, my name is Ahmed Mustafa, and I'm asking the City Council to please vote yes on the resolution for a ceasefire in Gaza. The United States is funding the indiscriminate bombing in Gaza right now. The majority of Americans want this ceasefire. 80% of Democrats want this ceasefire. Why should our taxes be used to fund a war that we are against? The City Council voting for this resolution will send a clear signal to our federal government that we matter. We are raising our voices. We are asking the federal government to heed the call of the people in this democracy. And I also want to remind everybody that our country has its own history of a persecuted people coming to this land and after violent struggles confining its surviving indigenous peoples to reservations. You can see the names of these peoples everywhere around Issaquas, Mamish, Seattle. Let's not be complicit in repeating the same history all over again. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Noah On. Is it Noah?
Good afternoon, council members. This is Noah On on behalf of Commute Seattle. I'm here to express our concern with the Comp Plan Amendment to enable transportation impact fees. A lot of people have spoken to the housing impact, and I'm going to speak about transportation for a moment. Our Seattle commute survey data shows that multifamily housing in Seattle advances our transportation and climate goals by producing less driving trips than single-family homes or homes that are outside the city. So as a transportation organization, we recognize that impact fees could be a valuable tool to fund transportation improvements. However, by discouraging development in the city and pushing new residents further into the suburbs, transportation impact fees could work against the city's transportation and climate goals and have the potential to increase transportation impact. And finally, this process should be aligned with the Seattle Transportation Plan and future transportation funding discussions and not incorporate soon-to-be outdated modal plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Khan Hassan.
Mr. Hassan? It's star six, sir. There you go.
Yeah, sorry. So this is Khan Hassan. I'm a member of Indian-American Muslim Council, and I'm here to thank Councilmember Shama Salman and community members and working people for bringing this resolution forward. I demand that all Democrats vote yes on Councilmember Shama Salman's resolution without watering down, put it on the top of the agenda. As you all know, genocide is going on, so stop this genocide. Don't be complicit in the genocide. Stop, do a ceasefire now. People are dying. Gaza has become a graveyard of children according to United Nations. There is no medicine, there is no water to drink. People are dying of thirst and food and medicine. All hospitals have been bombed using our tax dollars. The bombers made by Boeing, the Boeing in our neighborhood that makes Bombard is being used to bomb the innocent children and women of Gaza right now while.
Our next speaker is Ian Warner.
Hello, Council, Ian Warner. Hello, Council, Ian Warner, Public Policy Director, Vulcan Real Estate, testifying in opposition to transportation impact fees. Thank you for taking public comment today. As the council is aware, transportation and housing infrastructure are interdependent, and both are critical elements of a livable, equitable, and sustainable Seattle. The research considering that interdependence tells us that impact fees are often ill-suited to fit the complex needs of urban infill development like Seattle, and that most transportation impacts from infill can and should be mitigated by increasing reliance on transit. To the idea that other cities have impact fees, those comparisons between smaller cities and Seattle's density are not apples to apples. In fact, comparatively, Seattle already charges development more than most cities in the region. Impact fees, when combined with MHA fees, would make Seattle one of the most expensive cities in which to produce housing in our state. We would ask that the council reject adoption of Council Bill 12063.
Thank you.
Our next.
Next.
Our next remote speaker is Abby Brockman.
Abby? There you go.
Hi, good afternoon, council members. My name is Abby Brockman. I'm a Jewish chaplain from D2, asking you to support the amended version of Suwon's resolution by Councilmembers Juarez, Herbert, and Mosqueta, which calls for an urgent ceasefire in Gaza, release of hostages, and provision of humanitarian aid. While some powerful mainstream Jewish institutions and leaders are against it and are lobbying abjectly false and dangerously misinformed accusations of it employing antisemitism, they do not fully represent or speak for the diverse Seattle Jewish community, many of whom are consulted in its crafting and support it. Our voices in support of it also align with widespread calls in Israel for everything listed in this amended resolution because Israelis know this level of indiscriminate bombing that Netanyahu himself described as, quote, "mighty vengeance," endangers four things: the hostages themselves, innocent Palestinian civilians, long-term poverty, and the reputation of Israel as a sovereign nation-state bound by international law which prevent collective punishment as a hostage negotiation strategy. This is.
Thank you. I'm sorry, please be mindful of the chime. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Many Cypress.
Cypress? There you go. There you go.
My name is Mary Cypress, and I serve as the Regional Director for the Anti-Defamation League in Seattle. I urge you to vote no on measures considered today regarding the conflict between Israel and Hamas. As an organization dedicated to fighting antisemitism and hate, we have seen how tensions in the Middle East lead to increased antisemitism at home. Since October 7th in Seattle, we have seen a dramatic creep in antisemitism. Jewish institutions receiving hateful voice messages, calling Jews terrorists. Synagogues have received suspicious letters, one with a powdery white substance. Vandalism of Jewish community centers and institutions, vandalism of businesses, swastika on a Jewish student's door at U-Dub, and antisemitic bullying in schools. We ask you to not bring any measures related to the Israel-Hamas war or antisemitism forward until there has been meaningful consultation with rabbinic and institutional leadership. We too are devastated by the loss of Israeli and Palestinian life. Instead of creating foreign policy, we want our elected leaders to engage in thoughtful dialogue, create unity, and to focus on rising hate.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Colin Christopher.
Colin? There you go.
Hi, my name is Colin Christopher. I'm a District 2 voter, consultant, and interfaith leader. Later this week, many of us will gather on tables with loved ones to break bread, to rejuvenate, share laughter, shed tears. Over 2 million Palestinians in Gaza will also gather, the intent to shed tears. Breaking bread is unlikely. There's nothing funny about 6,000 children's lives being cut short by weapons of war, so laughter will be scarce. Rejuvenation is a strange thought when one can smell genocide in the air. I'm fortunate enough not to know what genocide smells like. I'd imagine it's hard to forget. No one in this council feels comfortable with this. No one. I'm asking to transform your discomfort into action. City's ethics code cites integrity. Integrity, when one's feelings, words, and actions are congruent with their values. Integrity. Vote for Resolution 32118. Be for listening to your heart.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sarah James, and this is the end of the remote list, or the 10 speakers. Sarah James.
Sarah?
Thank you, Shama, for introducing this much-needed resolution. I demand that the council Democrats vote yes on this resolution without watering it down. Ending military and funding for Israel is vital, and it will take Democrats pushing against their own party, demanding that instead of spending billions of dollars on war, we fund things that we working people actually need. We need to put more money into schools, infrastructure, housing, you know? Many people in this meeting have spoken about the need for expansion in affordable housing in Seattle and the crisis of affordable housing in Seattle. Stand against your party and demand that we spend money where it is needed to be spent and not on war. It's absolutely disgraceful that this meeting starts out with a land acknowledgement, and yet members of this council cannot stand in solidarity with indigenous Palestinians and demand a ceasefire. Like, how hollow are these words to you? These words you start every meeting with, how hollow are they?
So, Madam Clerk, are we going to our 10 in-person, folks, now?
Well, now move to the in-person speakers. The first in-person speaker is James Brubau, followed by Preston Sahabu.
All right. Thank you.
James Brubau.
Hello, my name is James Brubau. I am speaking on the Gaza ceasefire resolution, which I propose we adopt, which I propose we adopt without, something, I'm going to start out a little bit differently. Tom Lear was a musician in the 60s and 70s who was famous for doing political content, music programs on him and his piano. He was famous for writing Who's Next?, which was about Israel getting the bomb. And he was asked purportedly, asked why he had stopped writing his music. He said when Henry Kissinger got the Nobel Peace Prize, all, not comedy, yes, was pointless. Okay. Thank you very much. Just say, no.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Preston Sahabu, followed by Matty Danks. Matty Danks.
Preston? In the last two weeks, thousands more Gazans, mostly women and children, have been brutally killed. In the last two weeks, Gazans continue to want for food, water, and fuel in the face of an inhumane siege. In the last two weeks, the Israeli military has unapologetically attacked collapsing hospitals full of civilians seeking care and refuge. And in the last two weeks, thousands upon thousands of U.S.-funded bombs continue to rain down on an open-air prison the size of Seattle. And two weeks ago, what did the Democrats on this City Council choose to do? Not only nothing, less than nothing. Not a single one of them would even second Socialist Councilmember Suwon's resolution on Gaza for debate. Their deafening silence is covered for war-mongering President Joe Biden, who continues to call for billions and billions more in aid for the Israeli military, a cynical extension of American imperialism that doesn't even care for the safety of Israeli people. Now these spineless Democrats are crawling back, trying to claim credit for our anti-war movement by calling for a hollow ceasefire that doesn't even address the core causes of U.S. military funding and the Israeli settlements. Pass this resolution now and pass it in full.
Thank you. Okay. Sir, Madam Clerk, before we go any further, Madam Clerk, can we, before we go any further, I understand people's passions and concern, I appreciate it, but we want to get as many people as we can to speak remotely and in chambers, and those of you who are in downtown.
They're chanting.
Okay, well then, all right, well, let's just take a recess then.
They've calmed down. So now we've got Matty Danks at the speaker, who's going to be followed by Lana Blinderman. And I just want to mention that we have two mics, so the other person can line up over here if you want to go a little quicker. Thank you.
Okay. Madam Clerk, before we begin, for those of you that are there in the Bertha Knights Room and those of you that have called in, I understand, we do, but I would love. But I would love to have, to get, go beyond 3 o'clock and get more speakers and hear from you today about public comment. So, the more you hold it up, then we can't get to the other folks that are on the line to speak to the other nine matters. So, with that, Madam Clerk, please call the next two speakers.
Matty Danks, followed by Lana Blinderman.
Matty?
My name is Matty. I'm here to demand that the Democrats of City Council pass Councilmember Sawant's strong resolution calling for a ceasefire, the end to the occupation of Gaza, the end to US military's multi-billion-dollar investment in the slaughter of Palestinians, which should be the first item on today's agenda, not the last. If this resolution unfortunately has little chance of passing, it is due to the treachery of the Democrats on City Council, who refuse to even second this resolution when it was put forward on November 7th. It is not because there is a lack of support from the working class. Your continued betrayal reaffirms that if we ever want to see an end to imperialist wars funded by our tax dollars, we need a new party that actually represents working people. Thank you, Councilmember Sawant, and thank you to the community members and the working people who have fought for this resolution, unlike the Democrats on this City Council. Vote yes on this resolution today without watering it down.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lana Blinderman, followed by Reg Hav Cashik.
Lana? Yes.
Go ahead, Lana.
Okay, hi, I'm Lana Blinderman. I'm a resident of District 3. I'm a Jewish, Russian, Israeli-American. And I called in two weeks ago, and I was really disheartened to see that the Seattle City Council did kind of the top of the Seattle passive-aggressive and didn't even bring the resolution to vote. I'm glad they found their conscience now to at least call for ceasefire, but that's not enough. And I, I think it is evident that for any peace to result, to come to pass, we need to stop funding the Israeli military and end the occupation. I call on all the City Council members to put the party line aside and just vote for humanitarian reasons. We cannot continue the way it is. Ceasefire is the bare minimum. So, I'm, 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 I propose to accept the Shama Sawant's resolution as it is without watering it down. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Reg Hav Cashik, followed by Tom Bernard.
Sarah?
Reg Hav Cashik, followed by Tom Bernard.
My father is a World War II veteran. My brother is Jewish. I grew up in a Holocaust survivor community in the city of Pittsburgh. The Israelis are well aware of the historic antecedents of what they are pulling. When I was a child, a particularly violent Zionist gave me a book to read called "That Was Then, This Was Now." The moral of "That Was Then, This Is Now" is I just wanted to make sure that I hated you. The Israelis are well aware that by what they are doing in Gaza, they are humiliating the United States of America.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tom Bernard, followed by Joe Sugrue.
My name is Tom Bernard, and I'm a 30-year resident of Seattle. I'm not sure how many children have to die in Gaza before politicians of good conscience speak up, but I'm sure we've passed it. The pictures and videos showing the results of Israel's assaults on the people of Gaza should horrify us all, and it is past time to recognize that this is a series of ongoing war crimes. Particularly, the assaults on Israeli, on Gaza hospitals are heinous. The claims of underground command bunkers underneath the hospitals are being increasingly exposed as threadbare lies. Yesterday, a former Prime Minister of Israel admitted that Israel itself had constructed sub-basements in Al-Saifa Hospital because of the tight footprint of the hospital itself. Israel is now about to do the southern part of Gaza what it has already done to the north. Forget the mythology of these so-called pauses, end the occupation, end US military aid, ceasefire!
We have our next speaker teed up.
Our next speaker is Joe Sugrue.
My name is Joe Segru. I'm a public school teacher and a member of NSCA, speaking in personal capacity. Thank you, Socialist City Councilmember Shama Sawant, for putting forward this resolution. Democrats, you have a side to choose today amidst this growing international anti-war movement. The movement in the United States urgently needs to discuss the strategy to end the war and end US funding for this and other wars in the era of the New Cold War. We need to discuss building a new working-class, anti-war, anti-imperialist party. The labor movement needs to organize protests of the rank-and-file and strike actions to take the movement forward. A crucial tactic is workers refusing to manufacture or transport weapon shipments to Israel. For example, the union machinists and aerospace engineers at Boeing could do this, and it would have a massive impact on the war. The $106 billion Biden wants to spend on wars across the world should be spent on the urgent needs of working and poor people, including living wages, healthcare, funding for public schools, affordable housing, and childcare services. As a public school teacher, shout out to the People's Budget Movement for funding mental health services in public schools and the occupation, tax the...
All right. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. All right. Turn off the mic. Here we go. Turn it off. We are going to not have it, no more speakers, just hold up. We really want everyone to have an opportunity to speak. It's not all about you. Other people want to speak today and give public comments. Okay, well then, well, so, Madam Clerk, I'm gonna look to you to whether or not we should take a five-minute recess.
Well, it's almost 3 o'clock. I say let's call two more speakers.
Okay, before we call those two speakers...
We can see where we are.
Yeah, let's see where we're at. And let's hold up...
I would like to mention, I'm not gonna be speaking over the people that are yelling, okay? It's just too hard.
I know, I understand.
Then I will announce the names.
Okay, well, let's do this.
Our next speaker is Anosh Cohen.
She can't hear me.
President Juarez, I don't think this is a call for recess, because these are ordinary people, these are our constituents, these are the constituents of elected representatives. They absolutely have the right and the moral and political responsibility to speak up. I do, I do sympathize with Linda, but I am happy to read the names out. I have no problem reading the names out.
No, we got, we have this Councilmember Sawant, and I'm not trying to shut anyone or take anyone's right to speak. I'm simply asking for basic dignity to let other people speak, so we can get through more people, so we can hear from everybody as much as we can, and it's now 3 o'clock. So, that's all I'm saying. Nobody is taking away anyone's right to speak. Madam Clerk, please call the next two speakers.
Anosh Cohen, followed by Mohammed Ansari.
Tough crowd. Dear Councilmember, thank you for your time today. My name is Anosh Cohen. I'm Jewish, and I'm Israeli. Since October 7th, I'm not the same person. Any human that was impacted by an event wouldn't be. Today, we're discussing the voting of the resolution to ceasefire in the current war wherein between Israel and Gaza, and condemning Israel for war. Without going into any opinions, I would like to stick to the facts. And by facts, I don't mean how many people died on each side. I want to bring you a little bit closer where we actually stand, the city of Seattle. Even though we are 7,000 miles away, on October 7th, Seattle life has changed for us. Since October 7th, there's rising antisemitic incidents here in Seattle, whether it's suspicious packages being sent to synagogues causing evacuation, antisemitic signs hanging around our neighborhoods, not to mention the posters of Israeli kidnapped victims being torn down, and protests around the city that are inciting violence. So what is a better use of the Council time here? Would it be condemning a war at 7,000 miles away or taking care of your Seattle constituents?
Thank you, sir, your time's up. Our next speaker is Mohammed Ansari.
Just wait. I don't expect you to speak over them, Madam Clerk.
The next speaker is Mohammed Ansari.
Good afternoon. I urge you to support Councilmember Sawant's resolution today, add Seattle's voice to the worldwide chorus at calling for a ceasefire in Gaza. The Lemkin Institute, founded by a Holocaust survivor, has called what is happening in Gaza a genocide. The International Committee to Protect Journalists has said this is the deadliest month for journalists since they started tracking statistics. The amount of ordinance dropped on an area smaller than Seattle is 2 and 1/2 that dropped on Hiroshima. Innocent children have died. The fact is that this mass slaughter and genocide is playing out in real time, in front of us, on our phones and on our TVs. There is no security justification for this. It is not accomplishing any security goals. It is simply mass murder committed with impunity. Let us stand on the right side of history and demand an end to it, an end to genocide unfolding before our eyes using weapons paid for by American tax dollars. We should not be funding the genocide nor the occupation. I ask you to vote yes on Councilmember Sawant's resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Council President, it's now 3 o'clock, and we have 58 in-person and 78 remote remaining.
Okay, well, let's do 10 remote then.
Our first remote speaker is Hannah Andreas.
Hi, this is Hannah Andreas.
Yes? Hannah? You cut out. Can't hear you. So, we paused the time, so I see you're unmuted. Maybe the call dropped.
We can go to the next speaker and then come back to Hannah.
Okay. Can we do that even though she...
They're gonna come back to you.
Oh, there she is.
Okay. Oh, there she is. You back, Hannah?
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah. You dropped out for a minute.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Apologies. Hi, I'm Hannah. I'm a constituent who lives in District 3, and I really urge you to vote yes on the resolution for an immediate ceasefire, to end all military funding, and to put it at the top of the agenda. Obviously, I want to make it clear that we don't condemn antisemitism, but we must acknowledge the genocide that is occurring. Thousands of people have lost their lives. Thousands of children have died, and that is important, and we cannot deny that. And I want to make it clear that I will not vote for you in the next election cycle, and I will mobilize other voters to the same if you are gonna be complicit in the genocide against civilians, against innocent children in Gaza. Thank you.
Thank you, Hannah.
Our next remote speaker is Zachary Zimmerman.
Hey, Zachary, star six. There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Hi, my name is Zach Zimmerman. I'm an educator and a renter in zip code 98125. I'm calling to demand that you vote yes on Councilmember Sawant's full version of Resolution 32118. There's clearly some internal debate over which of these two versions, which of the two versions of this bill best captures the need for bold, full-throated condemnation of Israel's occupation of Palestine and the US's role in funding Israel's military, and which seems politically expedient despite not addressing root causes. There are lots of others in this meeting that have made it abundantly clear which version they support, and I echo them. My question to you is, how many more deaths, how much more destruction are you willing to tolerate while you deliberate and delay? People in Palestine and your constituents here in Seattle are directly affected by your decisions, so I urge you to represent the views of those who have commented here today and your other constituents, and vote yes on Resolution 32118 immediately.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, our next remote speaker is Sabrine O'Day.
Oh, there she is. There you go. Sabrine? You can start, Sabrine. Yep. Oh, you just muted yourself. Star six again. There you go. Yep.
Okay, sorry about that.
It's all right.
I'm speaking as a Palestinian-American, I'm speaking as a Palestinian-American Muslim woman who has family in Palestine, and I'm hoping that we can all center Palestinian voices in today's public comment, as we and our families are directly impacted by this vote. I urge you to vote yes to a ceasefire resolution, and I appreciate the multiple Councilmembers who have already called for an immediate ceasefire in the last few weeks. I want to touch on what the ADL said. We as Palestinians also don't want to be targeted or killed or harassed, and we know that a ceasefire is crucial to the safety of all of our communities. For this reason, I would hope that instead of the ADL urging you to vote no, they would urge the council to vote yes. If they truly are devastated for the killing of Palestinians, they should stand as thousands of Jewish folks are standing with Palestinians to call for a ceasefire to end the indiscriminate bombings of Gaza. I support both Sawant's and amended resolution to do that, because it's my family, my community, and our people who are the victims of these indiscriminate bombings.
Thank you, Sabrine.
Our next speaker is Jessie Roth.
Hi there. My name is Jessie Roth. I'm a constituent from Capitol Hill. I'm calling to request, to ask the council to support Resolution 32118. I, in listening to Palestinian community members, support whatever resolution can pass today, because a ceasefire must pass immediately. However, I'm going to call on the, on Councilmembers who have not signed on to Councilwoman Sawant's resolution to say that you have an opportunity to be a leader here. You have an opportunity to do something uncomfortable and to, for Seattle to be a leader in demanding a free Palestine and not just stopping this immediate crisis, but stopping the next one. I hope you will all support that resolution, and thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have...
Our next speaker is Reza Marashi.
Reza, star six. There you go.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Councilmembers. My name is Reza Marashi, and I'm Director of Government Affairs for Kilroy Realty Corporation. I'm here today to urge you to oppose the adoption of transportation impact fees in Seattle. Your vote today is a substantial vote, and it should be based on today's reality. Unfortunately, both the fee proposal and the project list that underpin what you're voting on are from five to six years ago. Some of the projects on the list have already been built or funded from other sources. Passing this outdated list means that the city has to go back again next year and pass another comp plan amendment to update the project list. And the Growth Management Act says that local code needs to match the local comp plan policies, but if you change the comp plan to include impact fees, then the code will have to follow suit. Make no mistake, you are making a policy choice today. We're currently experiencing ongoing inflation and economic volatility. Transportation impact fees endanger much-needed private capital and market-based development in Seattle, which in turn will reduce MHA funds that are used for affordable housing projects. For those reasons, please oppose transportation impact fees. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Audrey Covner.
Audrey? Star six. I see your tile up there, so I know you're there. There you go.
Hi, I, okay, thank you. My name is Audrey Covner, and I'm Chair of the Jewish Community Relations Council, JCRC of the Jewish Federation of Greater Seattle, and I'm here requesting that the council not put forward the Councilmember Sawant's resolution. Like the proponents of the resolution, the JCRC and the local Jewish community are devastated by humanitarian impact of the Hamas war, and we all mourn the thousands who have died on both sides. No lives should be taken this way, and we are also deeply concerned about antisemitism, Islamophobia, and anti-Arab Palestinian hate crimes. And while we believe Councilmembers genuinely maintain a heartfelt opposition to the trauma, there are several reasons we vote against it. First, does not represent the views of the key constituents impacted by this war, the Seattle Jewish community. And second, the language of the resolution is often an inaccurate reflection of the facts. No one speaking on behalf of the Seattle Jewish community, no rabbi, to our knowledge, no rabbi, no executive, or other leader.
I'm sorry. Again, people, please be mindful of the 10-second timer. That's not helpful. So, Madam Clerk, I'll let you tell me when we call the next one.
Our next speaker is Murhaza Hakimi, or Murtaza Hakimi? Our next speaker is Mirtaza Hakimi.
Yeah. Mirtaza, star six. We see you... There you go.
Hi, my name is Mirtaza Hakimi. I'm a resident of District 3. I'm calling to urge voting yes to the ceasefire resolution with no watering down and refuse to send additional weapons or funding to the Israeli military. International human rights organizations are clear. We're witnessing war crimes and acts of genocide at an unprecedented scale that have already resulted in the death of more than 12,000 Palestinians, more than 6,000 of which are children. This conflict did not start on October 7. Palestinians have been subject to occupation and war crimes for over 70 years, and anything short of an end to occupation and freedom for Palestinians is unacceptable. I want to make it clear that I will not vote for councilmembers to oppose this resolution in the next election and will mobilize other voters to be the same if they continue to be complicit in the genocide against Israelis in Gaza. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Robert Singleton.
Robert?
Hi there. My name is Robert Singleton, and I'm Chamber of Progress at Center-left Technology Trade Association. Today, I'm once again asking you to not impose the regressive network company fee on the delivery services in Seattle as it further adds to the cost of getting basic goods and food. Having food and other items delivered directly to consumers is an essential service as many people cannot physically travel to every location that provides for basic needs. People who work in the service industry or have multiple jobs at varying hours cannot always make it to a store or restaurant in person. Individuals' differing abilities struggle to withstand transportation accessibility, and so, delivery services can be a valuable lifeline to them. And working families, justifiably, don't always want to go out to perform even more errands after a long day. By taxing the services, even just a small amount, you are directly adding the cost of living in an already expensive city, and the impact of that new fee is felt most by those already struggling to make ends meet. So, please do not impose additional costs on Seattle residents and seek alternative funding mechanisms for enforcing labor restrictions, ideally when the new council is seated next year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Starr Parker.
Starr? There you go.
Hello, my name is Starr Parker. I'm Jewish. I have master's degrees in psychology and education and work as a kindergarten teacher. Of the over 13,000 people that have been killed in Gaza, more than 5,000 are children. 9,000 children have been wounded, and all Gazans are now at risk of starvation. Research concludes that war trauma leads to long-term consequences on the psyche of children. The more prolonged the conflict, the more severe the symptoms. While I would love to see a resolution passed that calls for an end to Israeli occupation and to our tax dollars, funding Israel's violations of international law, I also support the amended resolution in order to meet the most immediate needs for a ceasefire and humanitarian aid. This is not complicated. I assure you that even my kindergarten students could easily determine that what is happening is wrong and must stop now. Please listen to the voices of thousands of Palestinians, Jews, and their allies in Seattle, as well as the majority of Americans and use the power you've been given as representatives to pass a ceasefire resolution now, not in our name. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Aman Ayyin.
Aman pushed star six. I see his tile. Aman? Maybe we can... Wait another minute. Let's see. Madam Clerk, would you like to come back to Aman? Oh, there he is. Good job. There you go.
Yep. Perfect. All right, thank you. First off, ceasefire now. I support this resolution. It should have been done two weeks ago. Two weeks ago, if it had been done, and we did an impact, since we are Seattle and we like to be progressive, we like to push the nation towards everything humanitarian. We are a leader in everything humanitarian. We should be doing this right now. If we did it two weeks ago, we may have made an impact by making less children die and less organs and limbs all over the place, under the rubble. I don't know how you can accept seeing all these images and not doing anything about it. Families have been destroyed, whole families. We are a progressive state, and we should be asking for a ceasefire. If you use the money for making America better, that is a better way of using the money instead of sending it over to kill people over and over. Ceasefire now.
Thank you.
We'll now move to the next 10 in-person speakers. And the first person is Shubhan Kakubur. And he... They will be followed by Jeremy Voss.
Okay, are they both up? It's podium.
Yes, they are.
Hi, I'm Shubhan. Hi, I'm Shubhan Kakubur. And I'm a student at University of Washington and activist with Worker Strike Back. I demand all Democrats vote yes on Councilmember Kishama Sawant's resolution for a ceasefire. I have a serious problem with Mosqueta, Herbold, Horas, and other so-called leaders who cooked up or watered down a resolution behind the scenes. The self-appointed leaders who made this deal with Democrats behind the scenes do not speak for the rank-and-file of the anti-war movement, nor do they speak for the needs of the people of Gaza or the occupied West Bank and East Jerusalem, who are under attack. Hundreds of Palestinians, Jews, South Asians, and other working people and community members have supported Councilmember Sawant's resolution. Some of these leaders say they support Councilmember Sawant's resolution but worked with the Democrats on the watered-down resolution because Sawant's resolution, quote, "unfortunately has little chance of passing." I completely disagree with this backward strategy of admitting defeat when the fight has barely begun. The war in Gaza will never be ended on the basis of such consistency to the warmongering Democrat. Councilmember Sawant and the working people have won countless victories on the basis of building fighting movements to win the maximum, not privately conceding to what was convenient for the Democrats.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jeremy. He has some pronouns. I'm descended from German and Iraqi Jews, both of which fled genocide. I grew up in the Seward Park Jewish community. Simply by being Jewish, I apparently have the automatic right to immigrate to Israel, get citizenship, and vote. Yet Palestinian refugees, even those who were born there, cannot return home because they supposedly pose a demographic threat to me. As October... As the October 7 Hamas attacks show, the system of apartheid and occupation will never keep me or my Israeli family safe, let alone Palestinians. And neither will murdering 17,000 of them, 90... Over 90% of whom are civilians and displacing 1.7 million. In fact, equating this violence with my Jewish community throws us under the bus of corporate profits. I remind you that the Jews... That the Jewish Community Relations Council does not represent Jews, as we've seen so many of us have stood against this. As Ombin Biyachad and Qatnaan have said, only peace brings security, and only an end to the occupation brings peace. Vote for the unchained resolution.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Bob Barnes, followed by Eva Metz.
Hi, council. Shom, I'm gonna miss you up there. Bob Barnes, I've been here in Seattle on occupied land since 1972. I support the resolution, the full resolution, because there's not going to be a ceasefire until we cut off military aid.
Yeah.
However... Let's do that. But whatever happens, we'll be back. I want to just take us back a few years to the Fight for 15 campaign. A lot of us knew $15 was not enough money. But it was a start, and we fought, and we've gotten it higher. If we have to, we'll deal with just a ceasefire. That's a pretty big deal in this room. Not in this room, up there. If that's all we can take, we'll take it, but we'll frickin' be back. Ceasefire now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker is Eva Metz, followed by Andrew Menday.
Hi, my name's Eva Metz. I'm a nursing student and a home care worker, and I'm a member of Socialist Alternative here to demand that City Council Democrats vote yes on Councilmember Sawant's resolution without watering it down. Councilmember Juarez has made repeated appeals for us to be dignified. I don't think the council members have a sense of proportion of what is happening right now, why we are so outraged. So many people have spoken about the horrors in Gaza, people dying every day. Just today, Palestinian officials said that they can't even count the dead because of the complete collapse of the healthcare system. This is horrifying to see as a healthcare worker, as a healthcare student, but just as a human being. And that's why we're so mad that, two weeks ago, council members refused to even second Kishama Sawant's resolution. And Councilmembers Juarez, Mosqueta, and Herbold have worked to water down this resolution. We need to end this occupation. We need to end funding for Israel's war crimes. No more excuses.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Andrew Menday, followed by Alex Olson.
Hello, I'm Andrew. What Hamas did on October 7 was horrific and violent, but it was very predictable. The conditions that Palestinians in Gaza are subjected to are also horrific and violent. They have no access to electricity, no access to clean water, and are at risk of starvation. If you subjugate a population of people to horrific conditions, they're eventually pushed back violently. It is inevitable. The conditions in Gaza are enforced through the brutal actions of the Israeli apartheid state and the relentless bombing campaign they have engaged in. The Palestinians in Gaza are dehumanized and are treated like trash. We must advocate for a ceasefire on Gaza now. Israel and Hamas have agreed to a ceasefire several times in the past. There is no reason to assume a ceasefire is unattainable now. We must end all military funding to Israel now. We must pressure the Israeli state to engage in hostage negotiations so that more lives will not be lost. We must pressure the Israeli state to end the occupation on Gaza and walk towards freedom and security for all Israelis and Palestinians. Vote yes on this resolution without watering it down. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My... Sorry. With the clerk's permission, my office has learned that a community member named Shabazz Abdul-Kadir has signed up to speak but needs to leave soon. So, Shabazz, you could come and speak if you're here. Do we...
Madam Clerk, is that a possibility to allow...
Oh, yeah. Sorry, I did that with Linda's permission.
Council President.
Okay. Sure. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Can you guys hear me okay?
You can.
Okay. Hi, everyone. This is my first time in this building, and on my way here, I saw a sign that says Black Lives Matter. I'm curious, when you guys say Black Lives Matter, do you intellectually understand what black people went through? Do you truly comprehend the reality of apartheid? The reality of Jim Crow laws? If you do, do you know, like the rest of the world knows, that Israel is an apartheid colonial settlement? And if you do, in fact, know these facts, then don't lie to us. Say it with your chest. If you want to join hands with racists, then you are racist. If you know that AIPAC pays too many politicians, if you know that they've lobbied to make it illegal to boycott Israel and over half of the US, and Washington State is not amongst one of those states, I might say, then we know what Israel is. We know Israel is a racist and violent settlement. So, we ask of you to divest from racism and reinvest in our communities. It is not that complicated. Vote yes to Councilmember Sawant's resolution that demands a ceasefire and an end to the occupation and moves it to the top of the agenda. And hey, maybe after that, we will have money for affordable housing and healthcare for the rest of us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alex Olson.
Good afternoon. My name is Alex Olson from District 6, and I am here to demand that the City Council Democrats support Councilmember Sawant's ceasefire resolution. The content of this resolution is not inflammatory. The war on Gaza is inflammatory, and to condone it is immoral, divisive, and unconscionable. The far-right Israeli government that the United States props up with military aid is not in the interests of the Israeli people, and support for the ordinary people of Israel does not translate into support for this brutal war. The shameful decision of the Democratic council members to not even second this necessary resolution at its first introduction shows again the unwillingness of the party to represent the vast majority of Americans, Democrats, and Seattleites who support an immediate ceasefire in Gaza. You have an opportunity today to show that Seattleites stand with the people of the world who are watching this tragedy unfold, to stand against the Biden administration's choice to spend our money on a state terrorism and a war against a civilian population instead of on improving the lives instead of on improving the lives of working-class Americans to end your shameful silence of tens of thousands. You're supposed to represent us, but you won't even show your faces. There is no excuse for anything other than support for this resolution. And rest assured that we will demand an explanation from each one of the City Council Democrats who might choose mass murder over morality today. We will remember your cowardice.
All right, sir. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kayvank Dinsir. And they'll be followed by Shanae Nowiki.
Thank you.
And I don't see anybody coming up to the podium. So, we'll call on the next speaker, who is Nishan Burns.
So, my name is Nishan Burns. I'm an ethnic Armenian. Two months ago, the council members may know, the 120,000 Armenian residents of the region of Nagorno-Garabakh were ethnically cleansed and forced under a month-long blockade of their only, you know, road under the guise of anti-terrorism. In light of that, the US Senate voted last week to temporarily end security aid to Azerbaijan. I know through my relatives and the suffering that forced relocation and occupation causes, and Palestinians are experiencing that suffering 10,000-fold. This may sound, you know, unrelated, but my point in saying all of this is that if the US Senate can resolve against military funding for a comparatively less bloody atrocity, then you have no excuse. Procedural excuses. Do you oppose the US's funding of this slaughter or not? It is really as simple as that. So, I and many others here demand a yes vote on Councilmember Saawant's resolution as opposed to the watered-down one, and we demand that it be moved first in the agenda.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Rehav Khashik.
Hi, I'm a tech worker, and I'm here to support Saawant's resolution and demand that council members pass it with no dilutions and no delays. There are hundreds of children dying in Gaza every single day, and this madness needs to stop. So, we need a ceasefire right now. But history of ceasefires between Israel and Hamas shows that ceasefires are invariably broken by Israel. The most notable case being when Israel broke a five-month-long ceasefire on Election Day 2008, when the world's attention was focused on Barack Obama to initiate a killing spree called Operation Cast Lead. This history will continue to repeat unless the root causes of this issue are addressed. And that means an end of Israeli occupation and an end of US military support to Israel. So, please vote for the full version of the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk? Can you hear me?
Council President, we're now at 3:30.
Correct. That's, I was just gonna call to your attention. Can you give me an idea how many folks are signed up and how many are left on remote?
We have approximately 48 in person and approximately 68 remote.
Okay. We will go, everyone, for 15 more minutes. And let's see where we're at then. And let's keep trading off 10 and 10 for one minute.
I can't hear the council president, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, let's just sit a moment till people are quiet so we can move on on the calendar. We have 10 items. Whenever you're ready, Madam Clerk.
Okay, so we'll continue for another 15 minutes?
Yes.
Okay. Our next in-person speaker is Dominic Wolfgang Wallace.
Hello, I'm Dominic Wolfgang Wallace, resident of Seattle for the past five years. I'm here in favor of the resolution provided by Councilmember Saawant or Socialist City Council Office. I demand all of you so-called progressive Democrats vote yes on the resolution without any watering down. I have a serious problem with Mosqueta, Herbold, and Juarez and all of these so-called leaders who cooked up a resolution behind the scenes to water down the demand to end the US funding and occupation of Palestine. The Israeli state's occupation is enabled by billions of US dollars every year, and it's what needs to end because it is the root cause of the crisis. No ceasefire will last as long as the occupation exists, and the occupation cannot be ended unless its backbone, US funding, is ended. I yield the rest of my time.
So, we'll move on to the remote speakers now. Our first remote speaker is Deborah Neiman.
Let's see. Deborah? Yeah, go ahead, Deborah. Oh, you just muted yourself, so unmute. Star six, there you go. You're good.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Deborah Neiman. I'm a Jewish constituent of Councilmember Pedersen in District 4 and a Seattle resident of more than 20 years. I'm calling in today to strongly urge you to pass the resolution calling for a ceasefire in Gaza now. There is no justification for the collective punishment of an entire population, indiscriminate killing of civilians, the denial of food, water, sanitation, or medical care to millions of people. You may hear voices today, and I think you have, that accuse you of antisemitism in taking this courageous action to condemn the crimes of the Israeli military. Please know that Jews of conscience everywhere are offended by the conflation of criticism of Israel with antisemitism. Nothing could be further from the truth. The actions of Israel, far from increasing Jewish safety as they claim, make Jews around the world less safe. Decades of occupation and repression of Palestinians have not resulted in peace in the region as only a political process can bring that about. All people there deserve to live in peace, Jews, Palestinians, Jews, everyone. Please vote for this resolution today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sinsef Shamir.
Sinsef? Star six? We see your tile, there you go.
Hello, can you hear?
Yep.
Hi, my name is Sinsef. I'm a member of a Coalition of Seattle Indian-Americans. I'm calling to strongly urge you for a ceasefire resolution in Gaza, ending military funding to Israel and the occupation of Gaza as proposed by Councilmember Saawant. We cannot afford to lose any more time and let any more children and civilians get killed in this inhumane, unjust, and lopsided war. The whole world has been watching the devastation caused by Israel with full support of the United States using our tax money. At this point, Israel is conducting a genocide on Palestinians, and we cannot be a silent spectator anymore. We should do whatever we can to stop this catastrophe from continuing, and I strongly urge you and humbly request you as well to support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Hamad Hashmi.
Hamad, hit star six. There you go. Thank you. Yes, we can.
Good afternoon, Council. My name is Hamad Hashmi, and my name does not matter. The names that matter are the ones called those. 6,000 children were dying so far in this war. I want the council to think about, if they could speak, what would they say to you? They would want you to vote for the ceasefire resolution. They would want you to vote for the end of this occupation. Please listen to the voice of thousands of children who are dying in this war. Please listen to the voices of all of us who are present here, all of us who are on the phone, who are protesting every day, the Palestinians, the Jews, and all of their allies and shares, as well as the majority of Americans. Please, please pass the ceasefire resolution now. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Noah Schwartz.
Hello?
Hello, we can hear you, Noah.
Okay, hold on one second. All right. Good afternoon, Council. My name is Noah Schwartz. My pronouns are he, they. I am a CRT expert and a PhD candidate from the University of Washington. Listen, you know, we have to condemn what's going on. It is an actual genocide. And in order for the genocide to stop, the occupation needs to end. And what that means is that we no longer need to, we should no longer recognize Israel as being part of a Jewish state, and all the Jews who are living in Israel, they need to go home if you are actually serious about peace. You know this, I know this, everyone in this council knows and agrees with me on this. What's happening right now, it is an act of pure genocide, okay? And, you know, my wife, all right, she's a drag queen, she's a trans sex worker, she teaches kindergarten, she taught kindergarten in the Austin Independent School District out in Texas. They fired her when they eliminated DEI. And my wife is being genocided, just like the Palestinians in Gaza. You know, honestly, I feel safer, me and my wife, being in Gaza.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Enfal Janita.
Hello?
Hello. Yep, you're on.
Okay. Hi. Hi, I'm inside, I live in Seattle. As a Palestinian-American, I implore you to vote yes on the resolution calling for an urgent ceasefire in Gaza without watering it down. Almost 50 days of relentless Israeli colonial aggression on Gaza and escalating violence in the West Bank and it's become impossible to ignore the stark double standard that shattered the ideal of Western humanity, revealing a painful reality where the right to life is arbitrarily determined, something we've always felt but have not confirmed. We don't even know the correct number of deaths as people are still pulling their families from under rubble in pieces or whole. This plea goes beyond diplomacy. It's a cry for the preservation of humanity, signaling the need to address the dire conditions faced with Palestinians for years who are Semitic people, making the denial of this resolution antisemitic. Recognize the weight of your decisions as elected officials who have to represent the people and choose the path of justice, starting with a ceasefire for humanity's sake and the chance for Palestinians to live freely. Consider the legacy you're leaving. History is recording, so please do the right thing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Let's see, we have Selena?
Our next speaker is Sahila.
Sahila.
Oh, gosh, I'm gonna spell your last name.
Saliha?
Yes. My name is Kalihov, I'm a Jewish Jew. I'm Turkish, I'm Muslim, and I'm an American citizen for over 40 years, living in the United States. I would like to call for a ceasefire, and I would like to have the full resolution passed by Councilwoman Saawant. I would like to ask you all, how would you feel if the Jews came into Washington, a country as big as Washington? And they said you all had to move out to camps, live in tents, live in concentration, concentrated areas, put barbed wires and stone walls around you in a space as small as Gaza? And if you don't wanna live, just go into the Pacific Ocean. How would we feel if they took our homes, our villas, our land, our gardens? We need to stop the, oh, this is not a war. This is just people trying.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mohammed Nassar.
I don't see Mohammed's tile.
Mohammed Nassar? The person after that is Carrie Conklin.
Carrie? Oh, there she is. Carrie?
My name is Carrie Conklin. I'm a community organizer, a proud progressive Christian in December 9/103. I believe every human life is inherently sacred. I am in support of any resolution which calls for a ceasefire. A Gazan family, whose two-year-old toddler received life-saving heart surgery because of the advocacy of my Jewish friend in Israel, lost their entire neighborhood to Israeli bombs, like over a million other Gazans. They have been forced to walk to southern Gaza with their three young children, only to pass countless dead bodies and body parts being shot at by soldiers, only to arrive to no food, water, or shelter. If we want to continue to lead our region and country with the example of our humanity, which includes our Palestinian and Jewish brothers and sisters, the City Council must fight the rise in antisemitism and Islamophobia by calling for a ceasefire and an end to the violence. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mohammed Nassar.
Oh, there we are. Mohammed?
Hi, my name is Mohammed Nassar of Capitol Hill, Seattle, District 7. It is sickening and disgusting to see our tax dollars funding Israel with violation of human rights and international laws and committing war crimes day by day. I support Councilmember Saawant's resolution without watering it down. End the occupation now, invest our money in our communities. I want to remind you that Gaza is 25 miles long by 6 miles wide. There is no safe place in Gaza now. There is no water, no medicine, no food. Babies are dying. Journalists and their families are targeted and killed. It's on all of us to stop this now. Anti-Zionism is not antisemitism. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Our next speaker is McKenna Parns.
McKenna, it's star six. I see your tile, there you are.
Hello? Thank you. I am a member of District 4, a child clinical psychologist, and a Jewish member of the community in Seattle. And I demand that Democrats vote yes on Councilmember Saawant's resolution without watering it down and move it to the top of the agenda. The chief of the World Health Organization says a child is killed on average every 10 minutes in Gaza. We, as a community, are not even directing funds and resources to our own children's mental health. We are ranked 40th in the nation for child mental health resources and access, which is a disgrace given the amount of wealth that exists in Washington as a state. We need to direct funds to our own community and not fuel the trauma and genocide of the Palestinian people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ray Levine.
Star six, Ray. I see Ray's tile. Ray, there you go. Ray? Ray, you're on. So, Ray is unmuted, but I don't know if Ray knows that it's their opportunity to speak.
Shall we?
Yeah. Well, yeah, I don't know what's gonna happen with Ray. I know, I don't, I'm concerned that Ray is unmuted but doesn't know it. So, if we move on, can Ray stay on the line? Or we got a couple more minutes to go, so.
I'm here speaking. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you now. Yes.
Oh, sorry, I was speaking. I don't know what happened.
It's okay, you're good.
Hi, my name is Ray Levine. I live in Seattle, District 3. I'm Jewish, and members of my extended family were killed in the attack on the Eri Kibbutz on October 7th. I mourn their loss, but one war crime does not justify countless more. There's no moral or legal basis for Israel's indiscriminate bombing, mass killing of Palestinians since October 7th. More strongly than ever, I'm calling for a ceasefire to stop the bloodshed in Gaza. I've been calling on my congressman, Adam Smith, and both senators to join this call, and so far, they are refusing. Your voice as the Seattle City Council, speaking for so many of us, Seattle residents of all faiths, would mean so much. I urge all council members to come together to pass a ceasefire resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. So, we got, it's 3:46. Madam Clerk, can you tell me what the count is on folks in chambers and those online?
Approximately, we have 62 in person and approximately 29 remote. And the time is 3:46.
Okay, so this is what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna, we're gonna go till 4:00. And so, do we move over to the in-chambers now?
Okay.
Okay, let's do that. And let's go till 4:00 o'clock. And public comment will end at 4:00.
Okay. Our first, our in-chamber person is Carl Dyer, followed by Sam Marouf.
Hi, my name is Carl Dyer from District 5, and I'm here to demand that all City Council Democrats vote yes on Councilmember Saawant's ceasefire resolution. Put this resolution first on the agenda. Don't hide it behind the rest of the agenda in an attempt to distract us. And don't think that a toothless resolution will satisfy your responsibility to stand against the slaughter. By planning to introduce a competing resolution, you've shown that pressure from the people can have some effect. But by calling for a ceasefire without calling for an end to US military aid to Israel, you'd be trying to have it both ways, claiming to be pro-peace while turning down the opportunity to make a real and actionable call from local to national government to stop spending our tax dollars on bombs and bullets to be used against Gazan civilians. American money and weapons are the bedrock of the brutality we've seen in the last weeks and the decades of apartheid conditions in Gaza. Councilmember Saawant's resolution calls for an end to the occupation, an end to the violence, and an end to the conditions that engender violence. Vote yes on Saawant's ceasefire. End the occupation.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sam Marouf, followed by Mirage Bagh. And I'm not seeing anybody approach the podium, so we'll move on to the next two speakers. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mirage Bagh. I'm here in support of Councilwoman Saawant's original resolution for a ceasefire and end of occupation. My name is Mirage Bagh. I'm a physician at a local Seattle public hospital. I'm here because being able to leave the hospital and go home safely and being able to care for patients peacefully, dignitizing with comfort, is something that healthcare providers at El Shifa Hospital in Gaza were not able to do as they were attempting to fulfill their oath to humanity by caring for their patients. Their patients were not Palestinian resistance groups. These are innocent people, men, women, and children, adolescents, toddlers, infants, newborn babies. Imagine this happening in a Seattle hospital. Would you guys agree to disagree then? These people were killed as a result of Israel's siege on Gaza, not just directly by bombs and gunfire, but the loss of electricity and fuel and lack of humanitarian aid has led to, is gonna be to more than just acute killings, but deaths down the line due to lack of longitudinal care and lack of access to healthcare and water and food. You guys have a platform to make a difference here. Please use your platform and opportunity and responsibility to your citizens to support the ceasefire.
Thank you, sir, your time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker is Mirage Bagh, followed by Brandon Eng.
Hi. This is Brandon Eng, from UW student from District 2. I have been under a profound medical stress for the last week or two and having sleep difficulties. And yet, I still come out here today unlike eight out of the nine council members because we need to fund our essential services such as public healthcare, public education, public housing, public transportation. But our tax money going to fund the war overseas is a great disgrace. And we need to re-rect our attention here. Their fight in Palestine is our fight here. An injury to one is an injury to all.
Thank you, sir.
Our next person is Mohammed Kahalia, followed by Iman Ramada.
Hi, my name is Mohammed. I can name many of atrocities Israel has committed against Palestinians. Since 1948, there you're seen, all the way to today, Gaza 2023. Since 1948, there you seen, all the way to today, Gaza 2023. And we call this self-defense, or many of us call it self-defense, but it's actually a deliberate massacre of innocent Palestinian lives. A young boy named Youssef, 21 years old, he's a son of a friend of mine in Gaza and Jabalya. He was targeted by a missile attack from a war—sorry, an aircraft that killed him. After so many communications with my friend in Jabalya, he decided to leave with his kids and his wife to Rafah, leaving behind his disabled dad and his ailing mother and his brother who can't take this journey. This is just one example of many of these daily suffering of Palestinians in Gaza and Palestine everywhere. So you should vote on the ceasefire resolution.
Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker is Iman Ramadan, followed by Yasir Morsi. Okay, we'll move on to Hannah Swabata.
Hi, my name is Hannah Swabata, and I'm an activist with Workers Strike Back. And I think it seems clear why the Democrats have put our Gaza resolution last on the agenda. They know that hundreds of us has taken time off of work or school to come to City Hall, and they want most of us gone when they actually vote. That's how far the Democrats' commitment to democracy goes. I demand that our resolution be put first on the agenda. Furthermore, Mosqueta, Herbal, and Juarez have brought a substitute resolution that is very watered down—a very watered down version of Councilmember Sawant's resolution. Everybody should vote on Councilmember Sawant's resolution instead. Their resolution—the one not—that we're not here for today—fails to call for an end to the occupation. It also fails to call for an end to $3.8 billion in annual U.S. military aid to Israeli state. These are not secondary issues. The occupation and the U.S. military funding that makes it possible are root causes of the decades-long bloody conflict which has seen multiple temporary ceasefires.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, let's take a pause so other people can speak.
Our next speaker is Lea Vu, followed by Elan Hammond.
Hi, my name is Lea Vu. I demand that all council members vote yes on Councilmember Sawant's resolution without compromise. You must stand on the right side of history. Failing this, shame on you. Shame on you for your cowardice and for enabling a genocide. How many more times must we, looking back, say never again to genocide? It's time to say no, now. No to genocide, no to occupation, no to military funding, to Israel.
Our next speaker is Elan Hammond, followed by Leila Al Tazee.
Thank you.
Salaam alaikum. My name is Ilya Ahmad. I'm Palestinian from Jerusalem. My family fled Palestine in 19—Jerusalem in 1948 and never come back. And this is the story of my friend Ariz in Gaza. She fled from the north Gaza to southern Gaza, seeking refuge for her family. When I called her earlier this month, she said, "We sleep every day, thinking our name will be there in the news next day." The moment that we wake up in the morning, we breathe again, see, Alhamdulillah, praise to God that we're still alive. These people have their dreams. They have the life to live. They have kids to feed. All their kids, they sleep with no food. Shame on you if you stand with the wrong side in the history. You need to stop the genocide for my people. My people fought for that occupation for the last 75 years. So we need to stand with the right side of the history. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Leila Al Tazee.
Yes, I am a Palestinian-American. I have family within Israel's borders, and I'm here asking that you unanimously pass a resolution for ceasefire today. I have to say, it's incredibly frustrating that it has taken the council this long to just make a basic demand for ceasefire. It's also frustrating that the Palestinian community has been asked to curb our ask for equal rights, to curb our ask for basic human rights, and essentially beg you to stand up for a ceasefire. So while Sawant's resolution addresses the root causes of this violence and asks for what many of us Palestinians want—an end to military funding and an end to the occupation, for the sake of the people under attack who will be murdered today and who will be murdered tomorrow, a ceasefire is the bare minimum you should do today to support them. And I'm asking, are you at least willing to do that? Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Randa Tawil, followed by Yasmin Eratoni.
Hello, my name is Randa. I am a resident of Seattle. I'm also a Palestinian. My friend Mossab Abutuha was kidnapped yesterday by the IDF as he was traveling to south Gaza. He is a poet. A few days ago, he wrote, "Winter is coming, and we don't have enough clothes. More death, more destruction. Who can stop this? Please stop this. We can stop this." Every day, Boeing planes and ships are shipping weapons that are killing people like Mossab. If Seattle does not speak out, we are complicit. We must call for a ceasefire and an end of occupation. There are an estimated 4,000 people stuck under rubble. With fuel—with no fuel, we can't excavate them, and rescuers are only hearing the screams. What about these people under rubble is so scary that the Western world conspires against them? What is so scary about us that you can't even come here? Ceasefire now!
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Yasmin Eratoni. I'm an Arab-American. I'm a PhD candidate at the University of Washington. I'm one of the hundreds of people here today to support Councilmember Sawant's resolution against the war on Gaza and against the occupation of Palestinian land. I wonder if you're listening, because I can't see your face. Our siblings in Palestine are facing a second Nakba, and it is the responsibility of the whole world to refuse displacement and genocide now. This is such a dire time in the history of humanity. I am here today because I don't want to tell my children and my grandchildren that I did nothing when thousands of our Gazan siblings were being slaughtered. You have the chance now to show your constituents, the world, and generations to come what you did when genocide was occurring in Gaza. We will not forget. Future generations will not forgive. Vote yes on Councilmember Sawant's resolution without watering it down. Ceasefire now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are we at 4:00? Madam Clerk?
Council President, it's now 4:00.
All right, so we've had approximately two hours of public comment. So now we have reached the end of our time for public comment today, and the public comment period is now closed. And just a note, which I normally don't do, but I will do in response to the many, many hundreds of letters we received, thank you, those of you who also sent written public comment, those of you that came to City Hall, and certainly those of you who have called in. I can assure you that the resolutions all contain a ceasefire. They all contain of stopping the killing. They all contain a return of the hostages, and of course, they all contain humanitarian aid. And I want to thank all of you, particularly those of you who have relatives on the soil 7,000 miles away, that we understand. And I hope you do not mistake our silence and prayers for indifference.
Council President, I can't hear what you're saying. I'm sorry.
All right. Well, I guess we'll just have to wait again until people—allow people to speak. Tell me when we can.
All right.
All right, so with that, now that we closed the public comment, let's move on onto our agenda, folks. We have 10 items on our agenda today. So next is adoption of the introduction and referral calendar. If there's no objection, the introduction and referral calendar is adopted. Not seeing objection, the introduction and referral calendar is adopted. We've been on to the adoption of the agenda. I understand that—well, we're just gonna have to wait until everybody can settle down, so— I know, just Councilmember Sawant, let me—let me get there. I know what you want to do, just give me a moment. Now, is there an objection to the agenda? Councilmember Sawant, I believe you had something?
Yes, thank you, President Juarez. Salaam alaikum to all community members. I move to amend the agenda by moving item 10, the resolution titled "A Resolution Condemning the Israeli Military Assault on the People of Gaza," urging an immediate ceasefire, humanitarian aid, and exchange of hostages, and an end to the occupation of Palestinian lands, affirming our position to Islamophobia and antisemitism, and urging the U.S. Congress to end all military funding to Israel to be the first item on the agenda before item 1. We have seen from public comment the overwhelming majority of the people here in council chambers who took time out of their day, took a break from work and school and family duties, and sacrificed to win this resolution. The other nine items on the agenda are all related to the budget, which is obviously an important issue, but, you know, the Democrats of the council are still passing a budget that does not address the needs of working people anyway. I mean, the people's budget has been fighting. But the point is that it's—the budget is also at this point an issue that was voted on and spoken about overwhelmingly in the committee. There is no mystery at this point about the budget votes and how they will go today. In fact, if the city council were to vote differently than in committee, then Seattle would not have a legal budget under state law until further changes were prepared to make it balance again. So, you know, no such surprise is going to happen. The budget votes today are fundamentally ceremonial. I urge council members to respect community members and working people who came here today, to urge the council to pass a resolution opposing the horrors in Gaza, end the occupation, end U.S. military funding, and take that issue up first on the agenda. I don't expect the Democrats will support this motion, though I am happy to be pleasantly surprised, but my message to community members is, if they—if the Democrats don't support this motion, then I really urge you all, if possible, please don't leave, because it is crucial that you all are here as witness for what happens during the—when the resolution is voted on.
Thank you, Councilmember Sawant. Colleagues before us, it's a motion to amend the agenda to make item J, which is adoption of resolution, to make it item H under Committee reports before the current number one, which is Council Bill 120635, transportation impact fees. So with that, is there a second? Is there a second to Councilmember Sawant's motion? Not hearing or no second, the motion dies for lack of a second. Let's move on on the—let's move on in our agenda. With that, after the objection has been noted with no second, the agenda will be adopted. All right, let's move on. So we are at the consent calendar now. There are many items on here, so I'm going to go ahead and tee it up, and then I'm going to allow Councilwoman Mosqueta to say a few words. We have the consent calendar in front of us. It has amendments from November 7th. It has Council Bill Payroll Bills 120710 and Council Bill 120711. We also have, under the Select Budget Committee, in which the full council is a member—
Council President, we can't hear you.
Okay, well, let's just take a pause. So at this juncture, Madam Clerk, I apologize, I'm going to look to you. Would you like us to take a five-minute recess, or would you like me to tell me where we can go forward? All right, well, we will take a five-minute recess.
I will let you know when we can hear you.
Get aside if you do not agree with this resolution.
We're not there yet, so— We're going to move on in our agenda. Madam Clerk?
Still cannot hear you, if that's not clear.
Madam Clerk, can we take a five-minute recess?
I think that would be wise.
Okay, let's do that. We are now going to go—
President—
—recess for five minutes.
President Juarez, I will urge community members—
Recording stopped.
Thank you, we are now in recess. We're back on the record, and we are under the consent calendar. Under the Select Budget Committee, in which all council members are a member of, we have 18 council bills, one resolution, and three clerk files. And all of these are related to item number seven on the agenda regarding adoption of the budget. And before we go to, um, the next part, which, which I would ask council members to remove anything, Councilmember Muscata has asked if she could speak to the consent calendar. Councilmember Muscata?
Thank you, Madam President. Just wanted to offer clarification to colleagues. The items 3 through 24, this consists of the consent calendar. This compromises 22 of the 30 pieces of legislation that are necessary to balance the 2024 budget. This includes items that had unanimous vote by the Budget Committee with no abstentions, consistent with the council rules, for which items can be on the consented agenda, and the pieces of legislation which were able to be acted upon prior to the passage of the budget ordinance. So I wanted to clarify, there is nothing in here that should be controversial. They all received a unanimous vote in the Budget Committee. We will take up individual votes on eight pieces of legislation that includes the specific item, item number seven, related to all of the 121 amendments that got included in the 2024 calendar year budget, our mid-annual budget. That will be up for discussion and individual vote. That is not part of this process here. Again, items 3 through 24 are on the consent calendar because they were unanimous from the Budget Committee. Thank you again for considering this, and urge a vote on the consent calendar.
Thank you. Okay, so not seeing that any of my colleagues want to remove anything from the consent calendar, I move to adopt today's consent calendar. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded to adopt the consent calendar. Um, so with that, as is, will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the consent calendar?
Excuse me, Councilmember Muscata?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Swan?
Yes.
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbold?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
And Council President Juarez?
Aye.
Nine in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. The consent calendar is adopted. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the minutes and the legislation on the consent calendar? And thank you, Councilwoman Muscata, for putting that into context about what's in the consent calendar. Moving on into our agenda to Committee Reports, my understanding is we have nine teed up. And with that, Madam Clerk, will you please read item number one into the record?
Agenda item one, Council Bill 120635, Amending the Seattle Comprehensive Plan to Incorporate Changes Related to a Transportation Impact Fee Program Proposed as Part of the 2022-2023 Comprehensive Plan Annual Amendment Process. The council bill was discussed in committee.
Thank you. I move to pass Council Bill 120635. Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to pass, uh, to pass this bill. Um, this is from Councilmember Peterson and Herbold, but my understanding is that Councilmember Herbold will tee this up for conversation. Councilmember Herbold?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I'd like to start with an amendment. May I?
Yeah. Oh, go ahead. I was waiting for you to move it, then I'll I'll do the magic words afterwards.
Perfect. I move to amend Council Bill 120635 as presented on amendment one on the agenda.
Second.
My apologies, councilmembers. Can we first move the bill before we move the amendment?
I, I think we already did.
I thought she did.
Thank you.
I moved it second. I, yeah, Councilmember Peterson seconded. Okay, so it's, okay, and then Councilmember Herbold moved to amend it. Now, I'm gonna say it's been moved and seconded to adopt amendment one as presented on the agenda. And again, Councilmember Herbold, as sponsor of this amendment, you are recognized to address it.
Thank you so much. Uh, this amendment would return the language in the transportation funding policy, T 10.7, to consider use of, from what was in the, um, the, the proposed bill, from use. The net effect of the amendment would simply be to maintain the language in the policy in its current form. This amendment is in response to concerns raised by groups such as Seattle for Everyone, Cascade Bicycle Club, Transportation Choices, The Urbanist, and Seattle Subway. The current comp plan transportation policy, T 10.7, says, "Consider use of transportation impact fees to help fund transportation system improvements needed to serve growth." The current form of Council Bill 12635 replaces "consider use of" with "use." The amendment, again, said differently, returned to the current language of "to consider use of." The ability to enact this amendment with the "consider use" language and still fulfill procedural requirement confirms what we've been explaining in discussions of this bill. With either language, "consider use" or "use," the bill does not create any obligation to create a transportation impact fee program. Hearing examiner specifically said, "Adoption of generalized policies of a comprehensive plan do not require or even guarantee that implementing ordinances be adopted. There is no imperative or requirement comprehensive plan policies be implemented through subsequent resolutions. They may be, but they are not required to be," end quote. As a measure of good faith, I am offering this amendment to address the specific concerns that we've heard from several stakeholders. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Herbold. So are there any comments to this amendment one proposed by Councilmember Herbold? Do I see any hands? I do not see any hands. Um, before we go to the vote on the amendment, is there anything else? Are you gonna wait till we do the final? Okay. Um, then, oh, Councilmember Strauss-
Council President, sorry. What, what? Councilmember Herbold, can you please explain your amendment one more time? I didn't realize we were running on an amendment today.
Yeah, we are.
Yeah, I, I, I previewed the amendment in our earlier, um, discussion, um, and shared it, um, prior to the public hearing that we had. Um, the, the amendment would return the language that says "used transportation impact fees," would return it to the current policy that says "consider use of." I'm offering that amendment as a measure of good faith to demonstrate that the amendment itself, the comp plan amendment itself, does not, um, does not bind any future council to, to have such a policy.
Thank you.
Councilmember Strauss, you did?
I wouldn't go that far, but.
Okay, well, you, you don't have any more questions?
No more, no further questions at this time.
Okay, thank you. All right. I'm just trying to keep, keep the train on the track here. All right. So with that, will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of amendment number one?
Councilmember Muscata?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Swan?
Yes.
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbold?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
And Council President Juarez?
Aye.
Nine in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. So with that, the, um, we called the roll, the bill passes as amended, correct?
Mm-mm.
No, I skipped a step.
We gotta go back and talk about the underlying measure.
Yes, thank you. Now that the amendment is passed, Councilmember Herbold?
Thank you so much. Um, so the bill before us adds 25 bike, head, transit, and freight projects that could be eligible for funding. It restates state law that allows exemptions for low-income housing and other public purposes, and describes a possible policy of considering locational discounts for urban centers. The bill does not establish a transportation impact fee program. Any proposal to create an impact fee program would need to be separate future action. People have pointed to the questions about the potential transportation impact fee program as a reason to not support the amendment that would allow for discussion of these very questions about transportation impact fees. For that reason, questions such as, "How much should the impact fee be? Is it good economic sense to enact a fee in this real estate environment? What else, besides affordable housing and childcare facility development, should be exempt from a fee? Could fees be lower in some areas to incentivize more development? How should the fee be collected, and at what stage of development? These are not questions for today. We will not be able to answer these questions until we pass a comprehensive plan amendment. Those questions would require separate future action. Asking these questions now in opposition to the amendment isn't aligned with the process ahead necessary to, uh, pass and deliberate on a transportation impact fee program. State law allows the comp plan to be amended only two times a year, once in the annual process or in the alternative during the budget process. All of us, all, all council members, during the, uh, annual comp plan, agreed on Chair Strauss's request to not consider any comp plan amendments other than those related to the industrial lands amendments. We agreed to do that, and thus, in agreeing to do that, we lost our first opportunity to discuss this amendment, an amendment that we have voted on, uh, making a commitment and a promise in four prior, uh, comp plan docketing resolutions. So all of this means that during the budget process, consistent with state law, is the only time this year that we can hear this amendment. So in order to act on Council Bill 120635 this year, the council is required to vote by November 21st, along with the passage of budget. Uh, the public hearing had to take place before the council could vote. That's a summary that, of what's been going on this year. Um, as far as some of the historical background, uh, in late 2014, the council authorized development of the proposal, parks and transportation impact fees. Um, in late 2020, uh, late 2014, the council adopted budget action, funding $300,000 for evaluation of impact fees, sponsored by then-council members Fagshaw, Burgess, and Rasmussen. In 2015, the executive response recommended a work program for one, development of an impact fee program for parks and transportation, and two, exploration with the school district of a program for public schools. That work continued in 2016, leading to a first draft amendment later that year. In 2017, council docketed consideration of comp plan amendments for impact fees. We made a commitment that the city would consider using the comprehensive plan, list of priority transportation, including transit, pedestrian, bike safety, and bridge projects. We could consider funding with a transportation impact fee if a program, uh, with legislation implementing that program was adopted later. In 2018, there was a root study and a CIPA threshold determination. That CIPA determination was appealed to the hearing examiner, who remanded the determination to council uh, in October 2019. And then the council restated the commitment to the public by passing additional resolutions in 2020, 2021, and 2022. We, we've seen the letters from groups like, for instance, Seattle for Everyone, who says "an approach to consider transportation impact fees should synchronize uh, with a transportation revenue strategy aligned with the Seattle move levy." A vote in support of this proposal today would allow for this consideration uh, of transportation impact fees, together with consideration of the move levy. I agree that the cost to develop housing should be part of any conversation about future impact fee proposal. That's why I asked central staff to develop charts, including totals, the cost of housing production. Um, I think many of us have shared those charts with, with the public. Central staff used them as an example for, uh, for an illustration based on the average transportation impact fee for Western Washington. Contrary to what we've heard in public comment, um, these, these charts, although it doesn't include permit fees, these charts show that the total cost of housing production can actually be lower in Seattle than for, for example, Kirtland or Portland, and depending on type of housing, either similar of U and Redmond, or substantially lower. So again, these are all conversations that, um, in order to have them and to deliberate on them next year, we do need to take this procedural vote to clear the way for those conversations by adding these projects into the comp plan, um, together with, um, the reference to, um, to the, uh, potential exemptions of a future, of a future impact fee if one is enacted. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Herbold. I'm gonna open the floor. Are there any comments on the, um, amended bill or the bill that's before us? Before we go to a vote? I do not see any. Councilmember, oh, I do. Councilmember Swan?
I will, of course, vote yes on the bill to amend the comprehensive plan, which is a legally required bureaucratic hoop necessary to allow even the possibility of a vote on corporate developer impact fees. The democratic establishment has, year after year, used backroom maneuvers to prevent developer, corporate developer impact fees from getting a vote. For years, they refused to conduct what's called the, you know, the state-level environmental review or CIPA review. And I disagree with the people who spoke in public comment for, for a no vote on this bill. In, uh, so after years of refusing to conduct the- In, so after years of refusing to conduct the review, the, then this past September, when the, when the review was finally complete, Councilmember Strauss unilaterally canceled the legally required public hearing. Now we have before us the comprehensive plan amendments, which is a necessary step, but there is still no bill to actually make big developers pay for the strain they put on our public infrastructure. The Seattle Mobility Coalition has repeatedly sued to drag out every bureaucratic step. They are currently demanding the hearing examiner consider the Seattle Mobility Coalition's previous appeal of the environmental impacts review of this legislation, the, that is the environmental impacts of taxing big corporate developers. That's the, what they're talking about. And by the way, the Seattle Mobility Coalition has no website, no membership. They are a legal fiction used by corporate interests to sue the city to stop impact fees and nothing else. And there can be no question about this being just a benign technical vote. In public comment this fall, we heard representatives of multi-billion-dollar development companies such as Holland Investments, the Downtown Seattle Association, which represents multimillionaires and billionaires, and others wax eloquent about how developer impact fees will harm affordable housing. This is truly Orwellian and disgusting. These wealthy elites are profiting right now of making housing unaffordable, and they have the breathtaking audacity to lie by saying that if they have to pay a tiny impact fee to help build city infrastructure, it will hurt affordable housing. It's a complete lie. Big business called allowing a public hearing for this bill, quote, rushing, end quote, this bill, which is frankly hilarious because it has literally been delayed for a decade already, and I've been on the council for a decade, so I've seen this. I, I will vote yes for amending the comprehensive plan to make impact fees a legal option. To be clear, I do not believe the political establishment will have the courage to actually implement impact fees on corporate developers, but by making it a legal possibility, it is something working people can demand.
Thank you, Councilmember Sawant. Councilmember Nelson.
I just, I would like to read just a small part of a letter that we received from organizations that do have websites, the Seattle Metropolitan Chamber, the Housing Development Consortium, and SEIU Healthcare 1199. They are sometimes strange bedfellows, but they all wrote to us a letter strongly opposing this legislation. And the, the reason is because in their belief, they believe that this will increase the cost of housing. It says, "Finally, and most importantly, we are deeply concerned about the impact of transportation impact fees on the production of housing. Our three organizations have been working in coalitions on many actions to increase housing production in our region. We work to pass multiple pieces of legislation in Olympia this past session that make it easier to build housing. We are supporting aggressive changes to the comp plan to allow for more housing. We work closely with our partners at Office of Housing, SDCI, and OPCD on reducing barriers, and we are enthusiastically working to pass the Seattle housing levy later this, next month. That is why we oppose anything that would make it harder or more expensive to build more housing of any type. Now is not the time to deviate from a pro-housing strategy. We ask you to vote no on transportation impact fees." You know, we can debate whether or not this is, I tend to go with the experts is what I'm trying to say, and that is what gives me pause on, on this legislation in, in addition to the question about whether or not this is truly procedural, et cetera, et cetera. So I just wanted to, I have not spoken to this, to this measure in, in a public meeting before, and I just want to explain my vote coming up. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Morales.
Thank you, Council President. I wanna, I, I won't be supporting this right now, but I want to share a little bit about why. So within the next two years, in my district, we will see the Judkins Park Link Station open. In anticipation of that, there are hundreds, thousands of units going up on North Rainier, as I am glad that that is happening right now, because it's important that we have within, you know, housing within walking distance to the station. But the areas between that housing and the station, we won't have sidewalks. There's no plan from sound transit to make sure that those sidewalks are improved. So if we want our children, if we want elders in our community to be able to frequent transit, we want people to opt for walking or biking or, you know, transit instead of driving, then we need to make sure that that infrastructure is in place. And we're expecting thousands of people to live and move through the area, an area that is already very dangerous for folks, without really building out the infrastructure. So it's important that we begin this conversation. And next year, we have four different opportunities to improve the sorts of conditions that North Rainier is experiencing and that we see throughout Seattle. We have the Complete Streets legislation that we are already talking about in the Transportation Committee that I developed with local and national pedestrian safety advocates, former ESTO director, a former mayor, to increase sidewalks when we build. We can pass the transportation levy that prioritizes equitable mobility, meaning that most, more balanced investments in a connected network of sidewalks, protected bike lanes, pedestrian zones, and other safe places for people to walk, bike, or roll. We can pass my Connected Communities legislation that I've developed over the last two years with over 35 community organizations that would cut red tape and provide more incentives to bring equitable development and affordable housing and services to our communities. And we can pass a much more ambitious comprehensive plan to build a Seattle within reach where everyone can live in a home that they can afford in a neighborhood of their choice with access to services and childcare and, and infrastructure that makes it safe and comfortable to navigate their communities. We can include impact fees in that comprehensive plan update next year. And I do think that, that that will be important to ensure also the affordable housing, the social housing that we've been talking about in the last couple of years, and really provide the opportunity to build the housing that we need on the timelines and at a cost that can make those developments abundant. So I do think that this is an important conversation. I do want to see us include this, and I think that that is a conversation that we need to have within the context of the larger comprehensive plan update that we're doing next year. And so I will not be supporting this now, and I will commit that this is a conversation that I think we need to pass and begin the implementation, drafting of the implementation legislation as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Morales. Thank you. Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you, Council President. Wanted to thank co-sponsor Councilmember Lisa Herbold and also our City Council central staff, both of whom have worked on this issue for over a decade. Anna Zavartz, the Director of the Disability Mobility Initiative, wrote to us and said Seattle is far behind in funding the construction of missing sidewalks. The Disability Mobility Initiative supports the City Council exploring transportation impact fees as a possible source for the necessity of increasing funding for this essential need. Let's finally get those sidewalks we've all been talking about built, and we need the funding to do that. And speaking of advocacy groups, we are taking care of a key concern they raised by reinserting the word "consider" with Councilmember Herbold's amendment. And colleagues, there's no need to decide based just on advocacy groups alone. We can and should also consider our constituents. A statistically valid survey of 1,000 Seattle residents in every district conducted earlier this year by a professional polling firm confirmed what many of us already knew: 75% support transportation impact fees. We all want more housing. Property taxes are also a cost of housing for multifamily housing and for seniors on fixed income. So the impact fee is a one-time cost, but property taxes keep going if we're concerned about housing costs. Yesterday, the Seattle Times editorial board endorsed this legislation to allow for a discussion of these impact fees. Unfortunately, there's been a lot of misunderstandings and misinformation about the legislation. But as the Seattle Times points out correctly, quote, "The bill to be decided by the City Council on November 21st doesn't enact transportation impact fees. It simply amends the Seattle Comprehensive Plan to show how impact fees could be implemented should the mayor and City Council choose to adopt them in the future." The Seattle Times also pointed out about the decade of delay, stating the council has fitfully contemplated transportation impact fees since 2014, and they've been discussed since the late 1990s, at least. It's past time for action. So the, the decade of delay is even more dire because if you don't adopt this amendment to the comp plan today, there's simply not enough time within the next seven months to jump through all the hoops again, to have the option available for the public's benefit. It's because you need to craft the program in the first quarter of next year or so to have it ready as a companion funding source, along with the property tax measure for transportation projects that the council needs to approve in July for the November ballot. So you're not just kicking the can down the road, you're crushing the can until there's nothing left but a big fat property tax following in the footsteps of several other big property taxes. And I'm concerned we'll look back next year with regrets, wishing you had at least preserved the option, rather than letting the window of opportunity slam shut on a diversification of funding options. So the argument about timing, that another delay would be better, just does not hold water. But if you vote yes today to make the option possible for tomorrow, colleagues next year will have the ability and the time to discuss and craft a program however they see fit. In addition to exempting low-income housing, you can insert relevant economic triggers to lower or pause the fee during tough economic times. No one has provided a spreadsheet to show how their return on equity would not pencil because there's not even a fee amount to debate yet, because we need to get past this procedural comp plan amendment hurdle so you can have the debate. So you can tailor the program to address the economic concerns. Because you can do that, the argument about the current state of housing market also does not hold water. So colleagues, let's leave it up to the next council, and the way to give them that option is to give them that option. And that's by adopting this legislation here and now, or else you're actually shutting off that option and making a choice for the next council that they have no choice. Give them the choice, give them the chance, vote yes on this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson. Councilmember Strauss.
Thank you, Council President. I wasn't going to say anything because I've already said things many times over, but I have been moved to speak because of, and I'm not, I have different understandings of what the procedures are than some of our colleagues, which is that this is not a procedural vote. This would be a procedural vote if it was a, if there was a draft rate ordinance or a final rate ordinance paired with the bill. We heard last week that if we want to amend the 2018 project list in this bill, which includes projects that are already complete, we would need to pass a new bill to the comprehensive plan. It would, the, the best way to do this is to pass this comp plan update at the same time as a draft fee ordinance or the final fee ordinance in the same way that we did with the industrial maritime. So zoning changes that were referenced earlier in this meeting. So I disagree with the statements that we can't discuss rates without the comp plan amendment. Best practice in my, in my perspective is to do both at the same time. Other statements made with the ability to pass this comp plan during the summer with industrial maritime, when those comprehensive plan amendments were passed, transportation impact fees were still being reviewed by the hearing examiner. Still yet, most comprehensive plan amendments were delayed from this year to next year for the major update to the comprehensive plan. I'm not going to go into the rest of it, just to say that I think that we're operating with different perspectives about the same facts. And for the, for me, for this to not be a procedural bill, we would want to have all of the work from the hearing examiner finalized, and we'd want to update the project list, and we would want to create a draft or final rate ordinance, which, as I mentioned, updating the, the project list would need to happen with the next council anyways. The draft ordinance or the final rate ordinance would have to happen with the next council, and there is the opportunity to pass this comprehensive plan amendment as a package at that time. So, thank you, colleagues. Thank you for your patience with me.
Thank you. Before we move on, is there anyone else before I speak? Okay, I'm going to speak, and then I'm going to let, see, Councilmember Herbold wants to close this out. I will be supporting this. I will be voting yes, because as we shared, and I have taken this position as a, as a lawyer, today's action does not establish impact fees, which would need to be done by future council. It does ensure, as Councilmember Peterson said, it does ensure that we preserve that opportunity for the new council, that the comp plan to be amended to allow impact fees, but no fees will be imposed by this action today. It is not unusual for discussion of impact fees legislation to span across multiple councils. In fact, council discussion and public consideration of impact fees, as Councilwoman Herbold pointed out in her chronology, began in 2014, and it has spanned four councils and multiple mayors. I will not go through the timeline highlights, but thank you, Councilmember Herbold, for bringing us up to speed on the historical legislative histor, history of this legislation. Seattle is not the first jurisdiction to consider impact fees. In fact, today, 74 cities and five counties in the state of Washington impose impact fees. Other jurisdictions impact fees. Of the 39 cities in King County, 27 currently charge impact fees. These include large jurisdictions such as Bellevue, as well as small ones such as North Bend and Milton. Portland, Oregon also imposes impact fees. Today's action, again, does not establish impact fees. The new council will take that under their wing and have, I'm, I'm guessing, I'm sure they will, whoever will ever be chairing land use, will have a robust discussion and have committee meetings and public comment to have everybody to be involved to speak to that. So I'm going to leave it at that and let the sponsors know, Councilmember Herbold and Councilmember Peterson, that I will be supporting this legislation today. So with that, Councilmember Herbold, do you want to close this out, or are you ready for a vote?
I couldn't close this out any better than you did, Madam President.
Well, I got to thank my staff for that. They've been keeping me, they're the ones that do keep me here. Okay, with that, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on the passage of the Council Bill as amended?
Councilmember Muscilla.
No.
Councilmember Nelson.
No.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Sawant.
Yes.
Councilmember Strauss.
No.
Councilmember Herbold.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
No.
Councilmember Morales.
No.
And Council President Juarez.
Yes.
That's four in favor, five opposed.
So four in favor, five opposed, that means the bill does not pass.
Yes.
It fails. All right. But there's always hope in the future. So with that, let's move on to the rest of our agenda. These are all the next nine ma, the next eight matters have to do with the Select Budget Committee. So, Madam Clerk, will you please read item number two into the record?
Report of the Select Budget Committee, Agenda Item Two, Council Bill 120706, relating to the regulation of network companies imposing license and fee requirements on the network companies, adding a new chapter, 6.700, to the Seattle Municipal Code, and amending Section 3.15.007 of the Seattle Municipal Code. The committee recommends that City Council pass as amended the council bill.
Thank you. Councilmember Herbold, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam President. So, all relates to the regulation of network companies. And as I think we've discussed in Budget Committee and as well as in my Public Safety and Human Services Committee, over the last several years, last three years, to protect a vulnerable and fast-growing sector of Seattle workers, the council has passed protections for app-based workers. In discussions of the minimum compensation bill last year, and in the discussions of the deactivation rights ordinance this year, I made a commitment to bring forward potential answers to the question of funding, the enforcement of this and other app-based worker protections. During discussion this year of the app-based worker deactivation rights ordinance, we discussed a fee-based approach to support enforcement. Lifting up the, the background from the Office of Labor Standards, who noted in their September 11th Annual Certification on the Office of Labor Standards Functions and Resources Memo, that the office is responsible for enforcement of a wide web of worker protections that cover 54,000 employers and almost 600,000 employees. They have a team of 34 employees, and in the memo itself, they touch upon Seattle's leadership in building these protections for app-based workers. I quote, "Much of the policy team focus has been on advancing labor standards for non-standard workforces." workforces, gig workers, domestic workers, and independent contractors. Work is time-consuming, as few jurisdictions have tackled such initiatives. Consequently, OLS must create roadmap rather than relying on the experience of others," end quote. We know that OLS exists, center the needs of our most vulnerable workers, and that every law enforced by the Office of Labor Standards aims to address racial and economic disparities. Thoughtful administration of app-based worker protections is work that supports disability justice, gender parity, and racial equity. The legislation itself is a 10 cent per delivery fee. If the app-based platforms choose to pass the fee on to customers, which they don't have to do, it will cost someone who gets a weekly delivery of mixed grocery and non-grocery orders a total of $5.20 a year. The legislation explicitly exempts all grocery orders, or orders with all groceries. Just quoting a fantastic letter that we received last week from the Workplace Justice Lab at Rutgers, described the Office of Labor Standards as "one of, if not the most effective local agencies in the United States." They have recovered nearly $14 million for app-based workers whose rights have been violated. That includes $3.3 million for 10,000 gig workers who are underpaid by Uber Eats, $1.6 million for 600 workers after DoorDash violated paid sick and safe leave rules, more than 1.5 million for 4,000 workers after Grubhub violated gig worker protections. OLS must have the funding it needs to uphold the law, their work results in dollars in the pockets of workers. Encourage folks to check out the Office of Labor Standards Enforcement Dashboard. Almost 77,000 workers have received financial penalties resulting from the Office of Labor Standards' work since its enactment in 2014. That's impressive stuff, and I'm excited to be able to support them further with this legislation. I encourage your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Herbold. I'm going to open the floor to our colleagues. Does anyone else have comments to make before we go to a vote? Not seeing any. I just want to thank you, Councilwoman Herbold. I will be supporting this, and I just don't know if the public should probably know. You have worked so hard on this. We've met with so many people and so many stakeholders, and we've changed the language, and we had great, robust debate, as Councilmember Muscata likes to say, during committee, during our Budget Committee. Oh, I see Councilwoman Muscata is online here. So I will be supporting this. Councilwoman Muscata, did you want to say something before we go to a vote?
No, you said it well. I just wanted to echo the comments of appreciation and acknowledge as well, for the record, Councilmember Herbold's long history and successful track record on improving labor standards. As we improve the policy, we also must make sure that there is the funding to do education and enforcement, and that's a great equalizer for workers, and it also helps those high road employers play by the rules as well, and appreciate all the work you've done throughout your time on council. Specifically, this legislation is, I think, yet another good example of advancing strong labor protections for some of our most vulnerable workers and supporting the office in doing that important education and outreach.
Thank you. And I just want to add one more thing, because Councilwoman Herbold and I will not be here next year. Councilwoman Herbold, you were instrumental, and along with Councilmember Gonzalez and a lot of folks, on the TNCs, the Transportation Network. And that took a ton of stakeholder work in Oregon, I mean, just going back and forth, meeting with companies, trying to meet the needs, but always having your North Star, making sure that labor and people, working people who do this, have the opportunity not to be exploited and have it in offices fully funded to make sure that we can regulate and implement this law in a good way. So I want to thank you for that hard work. Is there anything else before we go to a vote? All right, I'm not seeing any, so I'm going to go ahead and, Councilwoman Herbold, you have anything you want to say? You already said it, didn't you?
I did.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Councilmember Muscata?
Hi.
Councilmember Nelson?
Councilmember Nelson?
Nay.
Councilmember Peterson?
No.
Councilmember Sawant?
Yes.
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbold?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
And Council President Juarez?
Yes.
Seven in favor, two opposed.
Yay, thank you. The bill passes, the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Congratulations, Councilmember Herbold. Well done. All right, let's move over to item number three. Will you please, Madam Clerk, will you please read item number three into the record?
Agenda Item Three, Council Bill 120701, relating to the Seattle Department of Transportation, amending Section 11.16.121 of the Seattle Municipal Code to set new limits on parking rates at parking payment devices. The committee recommends that City Council pass as amended the council bill.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson?
Sure. Hi. Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, this is simply the update to the rates for street parking charged by our Seattle Department of Transportation. I'm listed as the sponsor of the legislation because I chair the Transportation Committee. SDOT uses a data-driven methodology to periodically update the rates for street parking, and this revenue is part of SDOT's overall budget. SDOT requests adoption of this legislation, and it already passed the Budget Committee by a wide margin. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for getting to the point. Are there any comments from my colleagues regarding item number three? Councilmember Sawant?
I will be voting no on increasing the parking meter fees for Seattle street parking, as I did last week when this bill came for a vote in committee. Parking meters are nothing but an extremely regressive tax because you pay the same amount for parking, no matter what your income is, and so it hits low-income and working-class and poor people the hardest. And this is especially in the situation of grossly inadequate public transportation because Democrats locally and statewide refuse to tax big business and the wealthy to fund the expansion of public transportation. This bill doubles the minimum rate from, parking rate from 50 cents to a dollar and the maximum rate from $5 to $8. That might not seem like much for rich people, but for ordinary people, that's a lot of money, so I'll be voting no.
Thank you, Councilmember Sawant. Sorry, I just had a text from my grandson, who's one. Anywho, let's move on. Is there anyone who has, is there anything else we need to say before we can go to a vote? Looks like we're good. Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Councilmember Muscata?
Hi.
Councilmember Nelson?
Hi.
Councilmember Peterson?
Hi.
Councilmember Sawant?
No.
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbold?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
And Council President Juarez?
Yes.
Eight in favor, one opposed.
Thank you. The bill passes, the chair will sign it, and Madam Clerk, will you please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? All right, let's move on to item number four. Please read, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, please read item four into the record.
Agenda Item Four, Council Bill 120683, relating to contracting indebtedness, authorizing and providing for the issuance and sale of limited tax general obligation bonds to pay or reimburse all or part of the costs of various elements of the city's capital improvement program. The committee recommends that the City Council pass the council bill.
And thank you for reading the short title. I should have said that, but thank you for that. Thank you for catching that for me. Councilwoman Muscata?
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, as you heard, this is the legislation that is commonly known as the multipurpose LTGO bond. This is the 2024 ordinance in front of us that provides the legal authorization to issue up to $84.2 million of limited tax general obligation bonds, as assumed in the 2024 budget and the 2024-2029 capital improvement program. As colleagues will remember, during the budget deliberations, I raised a number of concerns about the current practice of not holding employers accountable, specifically the concrete employers who were not coming, allegedly not coming to the table in good faith and negotiating with members of the Teamster unions and those who work in the concrete industry as they took to the street week after week to demand a fair contract. I am hopeful that the legislation that we have advanced as part of the budget that creates a, a contracting policy, a honest contracting policy, and one that looks at ways to ensure that there's comprehensive oversight of that contracting policy, that we can ensure future negotiations with entities like those companies who are selling concrete to public works projects have a way to hold the public entity harmless, much like the sanitation worker contracts that we have that ensure that if there is a company that is not coming to the table in good faith, that it is ultimately up to the company to pay any additional costs, whether it's delays in projects or delays that equal additional costs in material. Having a comprehensive contractor policy that ensures that that type of behavior that we saw from the employers that resulted in delays and delays and not resolution in favor of the workers should not be something that comes at the cost of the public taxpayer or at the cost of public works projects. I did abstain and then vote no on the legislation in committee. I will be voting yes to advance the other components of the CIP here today with a strong statement asking for us to have a responsible contractor policy put into place so that future situations like the one that we saw with the contractor strike, with the concrete employer strike, and the failure of the corporations to come to the table more quickly, that that kind of cost does ultimately come, as it does in the sanitation worker contracts out of the employer pocket. This is a good way to ensure a steward, good stewardship of public dollars and also to ensure that labor negotiations are quickly addressed and labor disputes are quickly resolved. Thank you very much, Madam President, and I will be voting yes on this item.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Muscata. Are there, I'm going to open the floor. Is there any comments from our colleagues? Okay with that? I'm guessing you're good on closing comments, Councilwoman Muscata? You're good? Good. Will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of this bill?
Councilmember Muscata?
Hi.
Councilmember Nelson?
Hi.
Councilmember Peterson?
Hi.
Councilmember Sawant?
Yes.
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbold?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
And Council President Juarez?
Yes.
Nine in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. The bill passes, the chair will sign it. Madam Clerk, please affix my signature to the legislation. Let's move on to item number five, and will you please read that into the record?
Agenda Item Five, Council Bill 119950, relating to taxation, increasing the tax rates of the payroll expense tax imposed on persons engaging in business in Seattle, and amending Section 5.38.030 of the Seattle Municipal Code. The committee recommends that City Council pass as amended the council bill.
Thank you. Councilmember Sawant, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Juarez. This legislation increases the tax rate on the Amazon tax, which is on the largest corporations and the wealthiest people in the city, by a tiny fraction to raise an additional $20 million per year to support mental health counselors and social workers in Seattle public schools. This is a huge victory for the rank-and-file-led People's Budget Movement, which my office inaugurated in 2014, and which has every year mobilized community members, union members, working people, to win tens of millions of dollars in progressive funding for social housing, renter protections, homeless services, and tiny house villages, and improvements in standards of living for public sector employees. Amazon just tripled its profits. Meta, the parent company of Facebook, just doubled its profits. Other big corporations have also reported record profits. The wealthy executives and billionaire shareholders of these big corporations can easily pay a small amount more in our city's Amazon tax so that public sector workers and public school students can get their base, can begin to get their basic needs met. This is not going to fulfill all the needs. School counselors and dozens of students provided overwhelming testimony during the budget public hearing about the need for more support for Seattle students. Last year, after the tragedy at Ingram High School, this, this issue was heavily featured in the news, but the lack of mental health social workers in Seattle public schools has not gone away today. There is currently only one therapist per 1,300 students on average in our school district. This is shocking and unacceptable. The Centers for Disease Control and Prevention has found that nearly 20% of high school students report serious thoughts about suicide, and 9% report a suicide attempt. Rates are even higher for higher, high school girls, LGBTQ teens, and native youth, with the most alarming increase occurring among Black youth. Suicide is now the second leading, sorry, suicide is now the second leading cause of death among people aged 15 through 24 in the United States. To fund the $20 million, this bill increases the Amazon tax by a very small amount. Thank you to the students and counselors for organizing with the People's Budget Campaign to win this funding, and thank you to the rank-and-file members of the Seattle Education Association and other educator unions like the North Shore Educators Union for your support in, of public school students and for this Amazon tax increase. This is also historic, actually, because this is the first time we are winning an increase to the Amazon tax, which we won in the, the first time in 2020 as part of the George Floyd movement.
Thank you, Councilmember Sawant, and thank you for your work on this. I will be supporting this, Councilwoman Sawant, and I appreciate the conversations that we had offline regarding your legislation. So with that, I'm going to open the floor to my colleagues and see if anyone else would like to comment before we go to Councilwoman Sawant for a closing remark and then to a vote. Councilmember Herbold?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to thank Councilmember Sawant for bringing this forward. The need has been well-established for mental health counselors at Seattle public schools. I don't think I need to speak to that need. It is great, and we know that our young people are at risk. Really wanted, what I wanted to speak to is the wonderful experience that this council has given the young people who are involved in this effort. Seattle Student Union is fighting for, to address student needs. They work throughout the city, uniting those in the North End with those with the South End. They work on issues ranging from abortion rights, climate justice, COVID safety, mental health support, Black Lives Matter, gun control. And we know that the way that we build our young people and encourage their increased activism and their increased civic engagement is by making sure that their efforts are efforts that are, have positive outcomes, like the one that we have us today. Grassroots organizing, strives to build from scratch, developing new leadership, organizing the unorganized, and making sure that the process is where one, people collectively act in the interest of their communities. And I'm really excited that this council is supporting that effort among our young people because it will serve us all well in our future when we have young people who are actively engaged with civic government, and they're doing so because they've had positive experiences as a result of their engagement. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Herbold. Are there any other comments before we move forward to a vote? Not seeing any? Councilwoman Sawant, do you have any closing remarks before we go to a vote?
No, no, I don't. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Councilmember Muscata?
Hi.
Councilmember Nelson?
Nay.
Councilmember Peterson?
No.
Councilmember Sawant?
Yes.
Councilmember Strauss?
No.
Councilmember Herbold?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
And Council President Juarez?
Yes.
That's six in favor, three opposed.
All right. So that means the bill passes. Congratulations. The chair will sign it, and Madam Clerk, please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf. Thank you, Councilmember Sawant. So let's move on to item number six. Madam Clerk, will you please read into the record?
Agenda Item Six, Resolution 32114, amending Resolution 31334, establishing the city's council intent to fund council intent to fund the Seattle City Employees Retirement System as informed by the January 1, 2023 actuary study. The committee recommends that City Council adopt as amended the resolution.
Thank you. Councilmember Muscata?
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, this resolution establishes the city council's intent to fund the Seattle City Employees Retirement System as informed by the January 1, 2023 actuarial study. I know that there was some amendments in the budget that adjusted the contribution to the SIR's rate. While I had concerns with those reductions, I think at this juncture, I will still be voting yes, as this is part of our balance package that advanced out of the Budget Committee. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to open the floor to your colleagues. Are there any comments before we move to a vote? I do not see any. And Councilmember Muscata, are you good with, you're good on closing comments, I guess?
That's correct.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the resolution? Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Muscata?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sawant?
No.
Councilmember Strauss?
No.
Councilmember Herbald?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Council President Juarez?
Yes.
Seven in favor, two opposed.
Thank you. The resolution is adopted, and the chair will sign it, and Madam Clerk, please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf. And now will the clerk please read the title of item seven into the record, which we've been waiting four months to do. I feel like we should have a drum roll.
Agenda item seven, Council Bill 120708, adopting a budget including a capital improvement program and position modifications for the City of Seattle for 2024 and creating positions exempt from civil service, all by a two-thirds vote of the City Council. The committee recommends that City Council pass as amended the council bill.
Thank you. Councilmember Muscata? Floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, thank you for all the work that you've done on the 2024 calendar year budget. I want to appreciate that this legislation in front of us is a compilation of all of the hard work the council has done in partnership with community over the last nine weeks. We have had a tremendous opportunity to not only advance our priorities, but to ensure that those priorities were rooted in community feedback and driven by the conversations that we had with residents and stakeholders, and specifically centering investments with our most vulnerable. Colleagues, I made a ton of comments yesterday, including a bunch of thank you, so I will hold off, Madam President, for maybe some closing comments, just to close this out here today, and just wanted to appreciate all the work that has gone into this, both from members of the council, but specifically having those council members lift up and prioritize investments from community. I appreciate the hard work that's gone into this and the 50 or so names that we read yesterday of people that we appreciate who made this process possible. I'll mute, Madam President.
I was saying, thank you so much. We've been through many budget cycles. This is a big one, and it's your last one, so thank you, but we'll come back to your thank yous. Councilmember Herbald has her hand up. Councilmember Herbald?
Thank you. I just want to start off with thanking the mayor for including a 2% down payment on closing the 7% pay penalty gap for frontline human services providers, as well as thanking, as almost, almost entirely funding the, the inflation, inflationary adjustments. This is just so important. I want to thank all the council members who supported human service provider wage increases to keep up with inflation, as well as addressing the pay penalty gap, to ensure that they don't fall behind and they continue their life-saving, mission-critical care work. I want to also appreciate the fact that we funded, not just, not just created the, the fee, the app-based fee, to in the future, fund the app-based work, but in the short term, funding for FAS and OLS to implement the app-based worker deactivation rights ordinance. Appreciate the funding included in this budget for mental health resources, for our frontline community-based crisis responders, who are doing trauma-inducing work as violence preventers and violence interrupters, and finding themselves, friends, and family members to be victims of gun violence. Also, in that same vein, appreciate the funding for increasing the reach of a gun violence reduction program that provides wraparound services to victims of gun violence and their families in order to reduce the likelihood of their involvement in retributive violence, and also the funding to support the Office of the Inspector General and the Office of Police Accountability in their efforts to support constitutional policing. Also like to thank Budget Chair Muscata for shepherding us through the process with yet another successful conclusion to the budget to address the needs of people most in need. Thank you as well to all of central staff, including Director Handy and Deputy Director Pinucci. Also, for the items I sponsored, I want to thank Greg Dos, Ann Gorman, Ken Lebrecht, Karina Bull, Jasmine Maraja, and Asha Venkataramon. Thank you to the staff in my office, Noel Aldrich, Christina Subos, Sunny Nguyen, and Elizabeth Villaduenas. And thank you to our clerks team for helping us manage these meetings. Amelia, Cody, and Linda, we deeply appreciate you. Thanks as well to Patty for keeping our materials accessible, and our media team for your innovative public engagement. Just a shout out there to, to Joseph, Dana, and, and Jesse. I know I've forgotten someone. I'm sorry. I want to most of all give my thanks to the hundreds, maybe thousands, of members of the public for engaging in this process, to make sure this council is tending to the greatest needs of those with the least first, as this is my last budget process on the council will be a memory that I hold dear. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Herbald, and I will have some words as well, but I'll let Councilmember Morales go. Councilmember Morales?
Yes. Thank you. Thanks, everyone. We're going to have a lot of thank yous. Which I know you love, Council President. I do want to really appreciate the work that we were able to do, particularly supporting priorities for the people of District 2. So we were able to support cultural preservation and the arts with community grant programs at Art Center, recognizing and preserving legacies of our communities of color, supporting culturally appropriate care, whether that's for after-school programs, mental health programs, and greater community care by supporting pay for direct service providers and greater access to food security. We supported improved safety for domestic violence services and better reporting on gun violence prevention. Supported community wealth building, creating a transition and implementation plan in collaboration with the Community Roundtable to ensure that the work of our community wealth building in Seattle is done the right way, and by that I mean really engaging with community members. We got support for safer streets for our kids, giving kids from kindergarten to seniors in high school protection from traffic violence near their schools, for more civic engagement and democratizing access to power by allowing our residents to directly shape the economic future of our neighborhoods. Support for over half of our residents who are renters by giving the city a better opportunity to enforce civil rights and habitability laws, and support for universally affordable, publicly-owned social housing by fully funding the first 18 months of operation of the Seattle Social Housing Developer. This is, as we know, has been the beginning of a hard conversation that the council will have next year. And so we also tried to set the table for the discussion about what good governance looks like and what greater transparency looks like in the budget process by requesting the executive work with council to resolve our deficit issue and providing resources for a smooth transition to onboard the many new council members that we're going to have next year. So I'm really proud of our team for, for that support, and I want to thank my colleagues for, for your support of these priorities. And I do want to have a few thank yous to our grassroots organizations and workers who engaged with our office and with council while serving our diverse District 2. I want to thank the Wing Luke Museum, who works to make possible many of the arts programming and projects that we funded, to our Seattle Arts Commission for their advocacy for more funding for community programs, and the African Cultural Arts Center for creating a space for Black artists and a home for intergenerational learning. El Centro de la Raza for your dedication to serving our generation, first-generation Latino community members, and the Generational Wealth Initiative Community Roundtable to DON and OED for their collaboration in this work and contributing to helping make change in the lives of families and businesses across Seattle. I want to thank the Domestic Workers Coalition for their tireless engagement on behalf of domestic workers. I look forward to continuing to work with you next year. And again, to OED for their collaboration, finding a solution to provide enhanced cleaning services in the CID, to CID businesses and their support of the night market. Particularly want to thank Monisha Singh at the CID BIA for their dedication to advocating for the people of the CID. I also want to thank Seattle Neighborhood Greenways, Rainier Valley Greenways, Beacon Hill Safe Streets, the Mount Baker Hub Alliance, and the Rainier Beach Action Coalition for fighting to make sure that the streets around our five South End schools along Henderson are safe and comfortable for the students and families who walk to school there. And I do want to thank Councilmembers Peterson, Lewis, and Muscata for working with my office to secure those investments. Just a few more. Democracy Next for investing the energy of working with the City of Seattle to build a dialogue between our community members and the city itself. Be Seattle, Lieutenant Law Center, Seattle Renters Commission for your unwavering commitment to keeping people safely housed, while also fighting to make sure that landlords don't act, do act in good faith with their, with their tenants. And to the Green New Deal Oversight Board and Beacon Hill Council for their work to ensure that the city equitably invests in tree canopy, so residents in District 2 and D5 aren't the ones bearing the brunt of our climate catastrophe. And finally, I want to thank my constituents, all of our community partners, city staff, especially central staff, and the 134 members of the Legislative Department, including my own staff, Alexis Churla, Evelyn Chow, Imani Carey, and Devon Silvernail. Despite public cynicism in local government, and we know it is high right now, all of you keep working to make our communities better because you just can't help it. So thank you. And finally, I do want to thank Chair Muscata for all of your stewardship over this process. You've been really instrumental for this council to make sure that we're investing in all of the core needs of the city in all of our respective districts, and I want to thank you for your leadership in my four years of participating in the budget process. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson?
Well, thank you. Cat's out of the bag. I voted for the budget yesterday, and I just want to call out a couple things that I'm particularly excited about or proud of, and, and one thing in particular is my pilot program to enable our service providers to get their clients on-demand residential or intensive outpatient substance use disorder treatment the moment they make that life-saving decision. You know, it's a small amount of money, but it is a new approach to removing barriers to access to comprehensive substance use disorder treatment, and I, and I thank you from the bottom of my heart, colleagues, for voting for this unanimously. I really appreciate your willingness to, to try, to try a different model. And if it works, great, it's scalable, and if it doesn't, we tried, so thank you. I'm also particularly proud of the investments we made in economic revitalization. In July, as Chair of Economic Development, I put forward Resolution 32099 stating the City of Seattle's recognition of the benefits that a strong and inclusive local economy confers upon Seattle residents and businesses alike, and endorsing the Office of Economic Development's Future of Seattle Economy investment agenda, in that was a community-driven framework for inclusive economic growth. That framework guided more than $31 million of investments in the economic revitalization spending category of the Payroll Expense Tax Jump Start Fund, including new funding to support the mayor's downtown activation plan, new funding for neighborhood economic recovery, workforce development, commercial affordability, and for community wealth building. And I know it's a relatively tiny amount in the grand scheme of things, but I'm, I am really pleased that this includes $20,000 to support the work of the new Seattle Film Commission and the Seattle Music Commission. They each get $10,000 each to build awareness of each commission as a resource for artists, conduct outreach on, on, on opportunities for paid work, and provide mentorship in addition to other activities. So thank you very much for that. And then finally, I'm pleased that this budget makes sound investments in public safety. My on-demand treatment pilot is one example, because now our partners diverting people from arrest or jail on, on charges of public use have some place to send them for addiction treatment. Another example is using salary savings for new technology that, if implemented correctly, has the potential to mitigate some of the increased public safety impacts we're seeing from the attrition of officers from the police force. So my point is, Seattleites, Seattleites want results, and they want us to try new approaches and use every tool in our toolbox to double down on the issues that are most pressing to them. And it's in this spirit that I'm happy to endorse this budget. Thank you very much. And I want to thank my staff and also Chair Muscata and, and central staff. I won't go through all the names, but it was, it's been a long four weeks or so, so thank you very much for your hard work.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Sawant, and then Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you. I want to just speak briefly. I want to thank, once again, all the working people and school district students who fought alongside the People's Budget Campaign to win $20 million per year increase in the Amazon tax. However, as in previous years, the 2024 budget overall falls far short of the needs of working people in Seattle, and I will be voting no on this budget. And, and you know, the victory that we won, which is the $20 million increase, this actually demonstrates that all these projected budget shortfalls are all, you know, that you hear from the Democrats, are all based on manufactured scarcity mythology by politicians who perpetually refuse to make big business pay anything close to their fair share, and then when they're passing this grossly inadequate budget, they will, as you've seen, they will pat each other on the back endlessly and congratulate each other and thank each other. I mean, I obviously don't have time to talk about all the things that are wrong in the budget, and we need to get to the Gaza Resolution vote, but very quickly, if you look at public sector workers in the coalition of city unions, they have been fighting for months for a bare-bones fair contract for anything resembling a cost of living increase after this punishing period of inflation, and they have been, again and again, presented with contracts that fall far short of the rate of inflation. That means that in real terms, even though on paper they're getting a wage increase, in real terms, meaning when you adjust for inflation, they're getting a wage cut. In other words, the political establishment would rather cut the pay of essential city workers than tax big business. My office has heard from people in the Parks Department about all the services that they cannot provide because of understaffing caused by unfunded positions through years of hostility budgets. This year's budget is fundamentally the same, and so, you know, don't listen to their, all their sweet talk about how great this budget is. This budget also, yet again, uses the Amazon tax funds, which are intended for affordable housing and the Green New Deal, to backfill budget shortfall. So in other words, they are, again, using the strategy of robbing Peter to pay Paul, meaning robbing one set of working and poor people to fund, barely fund the needs of another set of working and poor people, rather than tax big business, and that is why the Amazon tax that we won in 2020 was so pivotally historic, and we need to make sure that going forward, we build independent movements of the working class to win these victories, because that is how we have won anything ever. And at the same time, all of these, these, you know, these pretenses at great budgets while most of the city is suffering, it also is a reminder that working people, community members, marginalized communities, we need a party of our own.
Thank you, Councilmember Sawat. Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you, Council President. Just adding to the thank yous here, because I know a lot of work went into this budget, I want to start by thanking my constituents and the rest of the general public who have watched lengthy budget meetings and provided public comment about the budget in person, by phone, by email. I appreciate the general, all the Seattle residents and the employers who choose to be in our city for making their voice just heard and for paying the taxes and fees that enable us to fund this $7.8 billion budget. I want to thank our city clerk and the deputy clerks. Appreciate the thank yous that have gone out to the communications team and our central staff. Also, to the mayor's team, we know that the budget starts with the executive branch, our City Budget Office Director Julie Dingley and her team for delivering a solid start to this legislative branch back in September. And want to thank Budget Chair Councilmember Mosqueta and her team, and a big thank you to my own team, Gabby, Toby, and Hannah. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson. So, let me say a few words, and then, as you all know, I don't like long speeches, but I am going to, for the first time, kind of have a bit of a long speech. I want to first and foremost thank Councilmember Mosqueta, our Budget Chair, for leading us through and streamlining and working with our Communications Department, Dana and Joseph and the whole team, with wonderful streamlined approach, so everybody could key in with a dashboard to see the dates, the times, what we were voting on, putting up the links. Behind the scenes is so much work. Thank you for your leadership, Councilmember Mosqueta. I will miss working with you. So, let me just add a few comments that I have already teed up, because, again, this is my final budget. My office has gone through 10 budget cycles since I first took office, and in this budget, as Councilwoman Herbl pointed out, I'm just going to, I may repeat a few things here. We did pass a human service worker wage increase of $1.9 million, 7.5% HSD 805, to maintain an equitable pay for our human service providers who do outreach at encampments and everywhere across this great city. Those are caring careers and people that are out there doing the hard work. And this council has, at least since I've been on it, has taken three or four tries to increase that wage, and it finally got it across the finish line. The city and District Five is served by numerous human services providers, and just to name a few that have benefited from this budget cycle and the other nine. Sound Generations, North Helpline, our food bank. I want to thank Kelly, who partnered with Esther Lucero at the Seattle Indian Health Board. Last year, we opened our second clinic on Lake City Way for Indigenous brothers and sisters and their families. We could not have done that without the leadership of the Budget Chair in this council. Thank you. Children's Home Society, Aurora Commons, that works with women in sex trafficking, getting them into treatment, working with Harborview, University of Washington Hospital to take care of those needs, because we still have those issues on Aurora and Lake City and across the city. I also wanted to thank Sharon Leah Lehigh. We do have who operates the Lakefront Community House in Friendship Heights in D Five, and soon to be another tiny house village coming. And this is a special thank you to my staff, and I'll come back to a few more, but to Sarah Mays and Leila and Brindell, my chief of staff, and Murphy. We advance equity and inclusion for the city's transgender, non-binary, and two-spirit employees, which has not been done, and those, my staff work hard on that, and I just, they brought that to my attention, and I just want to thank them for that. And I know it's near and dear to them. We've taken a step to recognize Native American veterans through a place naming recommendation for the mayor's office. I want to thank the mayor's office for joining us in this effort to recognize not just the John Lewis Bridge in D Five, but that people of color, Indigenous people, women, BIPOC, LGBTQ should be recognized and be named and have places named after them all throughout this great city. We also achieved the additional $7.7 million for public safety and crisis response with SPD and HSD. We attained nearly $700,000 in additional funds in the budget explicitly for those struggling with food insecurity. I want to thank Councilmember Lewis and Councilmember Strauss and Councilwoman Mosqueta that stuck with me these last two, three years in getting the money in the door, because I do sit on Sound Transit. When we moved over Light Rail one block, so we didn't displace 14 businesses, so we saved Sound Transit $33 million. And we wanted it to be a walkable neighborhood, and that's Inner Bay, the Inner Bay Activation and Improvement Initiative, to make it safe for people to not only come to Light Rail, to use the storm facility, the community facility, but also not having to move Seattle City Light. So, I want to thank you guys for that, for hanging in there with me. And also, I'm really proud of this council. There's been two cycles now where you have invested in Native American youth to not only rise above in Seattle Indian Health Board and Chief Seattle. That means a lot to me personally. It means a lot to the tribes. It means a lot to Indigenous-led organizations and all of those leaders out here, not just in Indian country, but within the city of Seattle and the county. Thank you, Councilwoman Mosqueta, for being a partner with me on that and listening to me, taking my calls. I appreciate it. I don't think people know how hard you work behind the scenes. And with that, I do have to say this, because this is my last chance to say these things. Huge thank you to Director Handy at Central Staff, Ally Pinucci, Go Seattle Storm, Deputy Director Lauren Henry, our Legislative Legal Counsel, and all of the staff that keep us amazing team. I've never worked with the finer staff, with bright minds, kind people, who are always there to answer our questions, analyze legislation, a lot of it difficult, sophisticated, overlapping with the state and the federal government, and, I mean, it takes a lot, and they get it to us. They get the fiscal note to us, they get the analysis to us, fair and balanced, and I so appreciate that. And I also wanted to say, one more shout out here, those of you who have not seen that in my office, that is the official budget rainbow pony that Director Handy's daughter made for us during budget, so we will be auctioning that off at the end of the year. So, with that, I will be supporting this budget. I'm proud of this budget, and I want the public to know something about the budget cycle. It actually starts in July, August. It doesn't start the third week in September, when we get the budget from the mayor. That's when we meet with constituents and stakeholders, that's when we talk to our colleagues, and that's when we keep trying to get most of our items into the mayor's budget and then work with the Budget Chair to balance the budget. So, with that, I'm very proud of this budget and I will vote yes. Thank you. It's probably the longest I've ever spoken. Is there anyone else? I'm going to let Councilwoman Mosqueta close this out, and then we'll go to a vote.
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate all that you said and all the partnership that we've had over the years. Colleagues, I had quite a bit that I wanted to highlight in the budget, but thankfully, you have covered it. You have covered many of the core investments that we've worked on collaboratively and collectively to advance investments for our communities most vulnerable. So, thank you for your comments today. As Budget Chair, as you know, I have tried to create a process that centers this budget work on equity, transparency, and sustainability, especially as I transition out of this seat as Budget Chair over the last four years. I'm very interested in concretizing and advancing some of the policies and structures that we've been able to work on with central staff in partnership with the City Budgets Office in many cases, but really driven by the deep analytical rethinking that central staff and our office has done about how we can create a budget that is accessible and digestible for members of the public importantly, but also as us, as a legislative branch, to be able to have our mark on the biennial budgets and calendar year budgets that come in front of the council. It's been my honor to serve as your Budget Chair and to help throughout this process. Our focus was maintaining the city's investments on serving our most vulnerable, rejecting austerity, and ensuring that we are making good on the commitments that we have made to community, especially those commitments in the Jump Start Progressive Payroll Tax, and making sure that any new investments are adding to actionable and sustainable investments for our community and specifically our most vulnerable community members. We have worked to support amendments that reflect those values, and I'm thankful for all the comments that you've made today, that this package really does build upon our 2023, 2024 biennial budget promises that we made last year, and really tried to keep true to the efforts of moving towards biennial budgeting. And as such, though, given the increased population and the increased need, the continued hardship from the COVID pandemic and the inequity that we see in our region, we made additional investments to ensure that our community was more cared for and housed, connected and resilient, and healthy and safe. We had a long list of thank yous yesterday, and the Council President, my Vice Chair, and our other colleagues have covered those thank yous well. I just want to say how much we appreciate the hard work that goes into this from the community and the staff who work around the clock to help make this process possible in a very short period of time. A nine-week turnaround period for creating a budget is a very short time, so I'm thankful and thrilled to have been able to work with you and to deliver this package for 2024 as we head out at the end of this year and welcome the next year. Council members and community members can be relieved that we have realigned funding streams with the Jump Start Progressive Payroll Tax and ensured that $20 million were reconfigured to invest directly into the priorities as promised and committed to in Jump Start. This includes affordable housing, Green New Deal, economic resilience, and equitable development. We added an additional $5 million back to affordable housing, and then, when the revenue increased mid-October, for that revenue stream, we added even more. Colleagues, that means that this biennial budget yields a $600 million investment into affordable housing, housing that's not just affordable rental units, but two, three, and four-bedroom units, and also first-time homeownership opportunities made possible in large part thanks to Jump Start. We've realigned an additional $2 million back into economic resilience. This is for workforce development and workforce training, for supporting small businesses, and supporting art and street activation. Adherence to the Spend Plan is more than just realigning funding streams, colleagues. This is a way for us to maintain the trust and the buy-in from the public that supports the Jump Start Progressive Payroll Tax, again, winning in the court, the actual courts, and continuing to win in the court of public opinion, with two-thirds of our community members continuing to support Jump Start. And the way that we continue to retain that support is by adhering to the targeted investments that that plan has been codified to serve, housing, Green New Deal, economic resilience, and EDI. This package, as you heard from my colleagues, invests millions more into community health through early intervention and upstream solutions. Across our council, we have taken amendment ideas that help to advance health and greater self-determination, economic stability, and address the rising trauma and stress that our community members face. We've invested in economic recovery and healthy and safe vibrant spaces that support those small businesses and residents by providing spaces for social cohesion, recreation, and enjoyment. Those are public health investments that are accomplished through street activation, pedestrianization, and the promotion of alternative modes of transportation. And we've worked together to close this gap for human service contracts. The inflationary adjustment and the provider pay increases, and as Councilmember Herbl noted, in large part, the down payment made in the mayor's proposed budget, we have built upon that to ensure that contracts are not being inadvertently left out of these increases and ensure that we fulfill our responsibility for these original city contracts to receive the additional pay so that those workers can serve our most vulnerable community members. Investing in the frontline human service workers and in that field is how we will make sure that more people are housed, healthy, and resilient. I thank you for your work throughout the last four years in this role, and especially here today as we pass the 2024 mid-biennial adjustment package. I recommend a yes vote. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mosqueta. With that, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Councilmember Mosqueta.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson.
Aye.
Councilmember Sawat.
No.
Councilmember Strauss.
Yes.
Councilmember Herbl.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Morales.
Yes.
And Council President Juarez.
Yes.
Eight in favor, one opposed.
Great. Thank you. The bill passes, the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Well done. Congratulations, Councilwoman Mosqueta and all my colleagues. Moving on, will the clerk please read the short title of Item 8 into the record?
Agenda Item 8, Council Bill 120693, relating to the levy of property taxes, fixing the rate and/or amounts of taxes to be levied and levying the same upon all taxable property. The committee recommends that City Council pass the council bill.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mosqueta.
Thank you so much, and I want to use this as an opportunity to, again, thank my staff. I didn't say it explicitly in the last comments that I made. I did say it yesterday. They are included in the long list, 50-some people that we noted yesterday, but I want to thank them directly. Thanks so much to Erin House, Chief of Staff, who's been doing three people's jobs over the last year. Thank you, Erin. Thank you to Melanie Cray and Farih De Cuevas, who have been an incredible asset to our team and really helping to provide direct input on the budget and not only management. Thank you very much to Farih De Cuevas, but especially on public safety and homelessness services and caring for our most vulnerable and readjusting our criminal injustice system and the way in which funding is directed to community safety. Thank you to Melanie Cray. With that, Madam President, the item in front of us, Item Number 8, is commonly known as the 2024 Long Property Tax Ordinance. This is an ordinance that imposes the city's property tax for 2024 to pay city government activities and for general obligation bond interest and redemption. I'll be voting yes, and it was recommended passage from the Budget Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any comments before I move to a vote? Not seeing any. Will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Councilmember Mosqueta.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson.
Aye.
Councilmember Sawat.
Yes.
Councilmember Strauss.
Yes.
Councilmember Herbl.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Morales.
Yes.
And Council President Juarez.
Yes.
Nine in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. The bill passes, the chair will sign it. Madam Clerk, will you please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? With that, will the clerk please read the title of Item 9 into the record?
Agenda Item 9, Council Bill 120695, authorizing the levy of regular property taxes by the City of Seattle for collection in 2024, representing an increase above the regular property taxes levied for collection in 2023 and ratifying and confirming certain prior acts. The committee recommends that City Council pass the council bill.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mosqueta.
Thank you very much, Madam President. This is the last item for our budget list of legislation. The suite includes Item Number 9. This is commonly known as the 2024 Short Property Tax Ordinance. This ordinance reflects changes in the regular property tax in terms of dollars and percentages. It was recommended for a vote out of the Budget Committee. Thank you.
Are there any comments from my colleagues regarding Item Number 9? I do not see any, so we will go right to a vote then. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Councilmember Mosqueta.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson.
Aye.
Councilmember Sawat.
Yes.
Councilmember Strauss.
Yes.
Councilmember Herbl.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Morales.
Yes.
And Council President Juarez.
Aye.
Nine in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. The bill passes, the chair will sign it. Madam Clerk, please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf. We've been along in our agenda. There were no items removed from the consent calendar, so now we will come to other resolutions. So, will the clerk please read Item 10 from the regular agenda into the record?
Agenda Item 10, Resolution 32118, condemning the Israeli military assault on the people of Gaza, urging an immediate ceasefire, humanitarian aid, and exchange of hostages, and an end to the occupation of Palestinian lands, affirming opposition to Islamophobia and antisemitism, and urging the US Congress to end all military funding to Israel.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Sawat.
I move the resolution, the title that Linda has just read, into the record.
Resolution 32118. Is there a second? I will second it.
Thank you.
So, you're welcome. It has been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution 32118. Councilwoman Sawat, you are sponsored this resolution, and you are recognized to address this item.
The Gaza Strip is almost exactly the same size in square miles as the city of Seattle, but with three times the population. Gaza is home to 2.3 million people. Those 2.3 million people have been relentlessly bombed for the last six weeks, with over 14,000 people killed, thousands of babies and children. Palestinian people in Gaza are trapped within its boundaries by an air, land, and sea blockade enforced by the Israeli military, the fourth-largest military in the world, which is backed by tens of billions of dollars of US imperialism. Imagine if Seattle were Gaza and that we faced such an onslaught, with our electricity, water, and medical supplies cut off, food supplies dwindling, hospitals devastated... water, and medical supplies cut off, food supplies dwindling, hospitals devastated with only one left in operation. As UN Secretary General Gutierrez said recently, quote, "What is clear is that we have had in a few weeks thousands of children killed. So this is what matters. We are witnessing a killing of civilians that is unparalleled and unprecedented in any conflict since I am Secretary General," end quote. 1.7 million people, let me say that again, 1.7 million people have been displaced from their homes in Gaza and for people leaving Gaza City for southern Gaza. Israeli state has, the Israeli state has refused to say whether they will ever be let back, ever, as has been done in the past to millions of other Palestinian people. This resolution condemns the brutal Israeli military assault of the people of Gaza and calls for an immediate ceasefire, humanitarian aid to help Gazans recover, an end to U.S. military aid to Israel, the release of all hostages on both sides, and an end to the Israeli occupation and subjugation of Palestinian lands. And the aims of the Israeli government were made clear after Israeli Defense Minister Yoav Galant declared on October 9th, quote, "I have ordered a complete siege on the Gaza Strip. There will be no electricity, no food, no fuel. Everything is closed. We are fighting human animals, and we will act accordingly," end quote. And that quote, and that quote is not some aberration. There are many other similar statements from representatives of the right-wing Likud Party in power in Israel. And that quote is also exactly what the Israeli military has carried out. The brutality is not at the direction of regular working-class Israelis. It is the policy of Israel's right-wing big-business political parties, and it is the policy of U.S. imperialism at this moment being directed by the Democratic Party and President Biden. It is no aberration either that Biden refuses to call for a ceasefire, and both the Democratic and Republican Parties are competing over whose bill giving the Israeli military an additional $14 billion for weaponry will pass. Let us not forget that the Israel-Palestine conflict started in 1948 when Western imperialism decided they really needed a military outpost in the oil-rich Middle East as the Cold War began. The fact that that required displacing millions of Palestinians and started almost a century of violence and oppression is the last thing that the capitalist powers cared about. Our resolutions demand a ceasefire, as I said. It also demands an end to $3.8 billion each year and an additional $14 billion this year in military aid that the U.S. sends to the government of Israel. I urge councilmembers, the Democrats on this council, to have the courage to call out their own party and their own leader, President Biden, about this military funding. Because if Seattle Democrats say, "We want a ceasefire, yes, and here is an additional $14 billion for bombs and gunfire so you can kill thousands more babies," it is simply not real. The resolution from my office also calls for an end to the occupation of Palestinian lands because it is also not real to call for a ceasefire while failing to oppose the brutal occupation, which is the root cause of the current conflict, and the funding is a backbone of that occupation. This resolution also condemns the brutal October 7th attack when Hamas killed 1,200 Israelis, including children, women, and the elderly and other civilians, as well as Bedouins and other Arab Israelis enduring over 3,500 and taking over 200 as hostages. Global history decisively shows that violent attacks on innocent and ordinary people do not bring progressive change. On the contrary, we need an international anti-war movement with the labor movement and rank-and-file workers of every nationality leading protests and strike actions. Our movement opposes violent attacks on civilians, both in Israel and Palestine, which stands in sharp contrast to the political establishment and their imperialism. My organization, Socialist Alternative, has socialist sister organizations in both Israel and Palestine, and of course, they all oppose the war on Gaza, they all oppose the occupation of Palestinian lands, they all oppose violence against civilians, whether Israeli or Palestinian, sorry. We need to be clear that for the capitalist class, the Israeli-Palestinian conflict is not about race or religion. It is about maintaining an overwhelming military presence for imperialism in the oil-rich Middle East, and all the bloodshed and human suffering for the imperialists is simply collateral damage. The majority of those killed, as we know, are women, children, and elderly. The Israeli military has bombed hospitals, schools, and community centers. As James Elder, a UNICEF spokesperson, said, "The Gaza Strip is now a graveyard for thousands of children. It is a living hell for everyone else." This resolution is part of a global movement demanding a ceasefire. Millions have marched in dozens of countries around the world, and the movement is having a real impact because it is becoming less and less politically viable for Biden and the Democrats to continue funding Israel's occupation and oppression of Palestinian people. In fact, the fact that we are even going to have a vote on this indicates how much pressure is on them because it was only less than 15 days ago that when we brought our resolution, they had the nerve to not even have a vote on it. And here they are, they're, you know, yes, they're bringing a watered-down resolution, which we'll talk about in a second, but the point is that that would not have happened had we not put pressure, both from the protests and from bringing a resolution that put a spotlight on them and forced them to take a stand. So whatever resolution we win today, and of course, we should fight hard for our resolution, but whatever we win today is a victory that we claim for our movement, for our office, and for our community. It was not because of the Democrats.
Are you still?
Two-thirds of Americans support an immediate ceasefire in a poll conducted two weeks ago before the Israeli military escalation. A record 41, and I can't keep up with the polls, I'm sure there's a more updated poll as I'm speaking. A record-high 41% oppose U.S. military aid to Israel, you know, in the United States, which is unprecedented, including 77% of Democratic Party voters under the age of 35. Biden's approval rating among Democrats has plummeted to a new low in just the last three weeks. Among Arab-Americans, Biden's approval has shrunk from 59% in 2020 to just 17% today, with people chanting, "No ceasefire, no vote." As Nihat Awad, the executive director of the Council on American Islamic Relations, said, "That means ceasefire now, not several weeks or months from now." I want to thank the many, many Palestinian, Jewish, and Muslim community leaders who worked with my office on this resolution, and those of you who came to speak in public comment on November 7th and today. I want to thank the 1,200 people who wrote to the council in support of this resolution since November 7th, and also want to thank the Indian-American Muslim Council, the Coalition of Seattle Indian-Americans, Boston South Asian Coalition, Ambedkar King Study Circle, Hindus for Human Rights, I'm sure that's just a fraction of the organizations that are supporting this, and not to mention the thousands of ordinary people who are supporting it. Seattle is not separate from the world, and elected officials have a duty to vote yes on this resolution to call for an end to this brutal war and occupation. Seattle is also home to many people with family and friends in Israel and Palestine, including those who are in grave danger in Gaza. Now, here comes the hard bit, but it has to be said. I am extremely disappointed at those community leaders who have self-appointed themselves as spokespeople for all Palestinians, saying Palestinians want the extremely watered-down resolution. You don't. You don't speak for Palestinian people. You don't speak for the hundreds of thousands of Palestinians facing this bloody assault in Gaza, the thousands facing violence in the West Bank and East Jerusalem, or the millions of anti-war activists who are protesting in Seattle and globally. Let's be real, you self-appointed leaders decided you don't want to upset your cozy relations with Democrats, and you don't want to be on the wrong side of the political establishment. But let me tell you, by working behind the scenes to bring a watered-down resolution, which, as I said, we're still going to claim victory no matter what gets passed. However, let's be clear that by working behind the scenes with the Democrats for this watered-down resolution, you are on the wrong side of history. You claim that you are choosing the watered-down resolution because you think this is the only resolution that will pass. We have heard this from these community leaders. But what does that mean? They have given up fighting for the interests of people being bombed without a fight, and my question is a very simple question of strategy. What is the incentive for Democrats to vote yes on this strong resolution if these community leaders give them cover of their support instead of standing with people in Gaza? You know? So that is why it's important that the hundreds of us who are here, we are saying in a very clear and unified voice, we don't accept that message, that we want councilmembers to vote yes, Democrats to vote yes on our resolution. And I should say, if working people wonder how the Democrats can often get away with taking such cowardly positions on issues like this, look further than these self-appointed leaders who defend them, whether openly or behind the scenes. Fortunately, as I said, our chambers are filled with all of you, working-class people, community members from different nationalities, including Palestinians and Jews, but beyond that, who are prepared to stand up against this bloody assault, many of whom who have marched week after week against this war and who aren't afraid to stand up to the democratic establishment, and you are not worried about your cozy relationship with them. One last point I want to make for now, and then, of course, we'll be talking about other stuff later. Some have used the 2014 Fight for the $15 an Hour Minimum Wage as an example of why we should accept ceasefire. You know, obviously, if that's what we can win today, then we will claim victory, as I said, but they are arguing that, you know, we should, maybe we shouldn't even bother fighting for it because it wasn't that proven by the Fight for 15 because, oh, we didn't get the, everything we were demanding during the Fight for 15. Well, let me, I was there during the Fight for 15. I can tell you what actually happened. That is, this logic that the 15 example shows that we should just have accepted ceasefire from the beginning and calling it good is complete misinterpretation of history. Because the honest truth is that if I or any of the other ordinary people who are leading the 15 now movement had accepted that logic, we would not have won 15 at all. I'm not even sure if we would have won any minimum wage at that time. It was a bitter fight led by working people and socialists against big business and the Democrats, and we fought till the very last second, and that is why we won that historic victory. So let's not forget that.
Thank you. Are you, Councilman Sawant, are you done?
I have other comments, but I will stop for now.
Okay, I'll let you, yeah, we have some other motions to move. Are there, I'm going to open the floor right now to other comments from our colleagues. Councilor Mosqueta.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I move to amend Resolution 32118 as presented on Amendment A and previously distributed.
Second. All right, I seconded, I seconded Councilmember Sawant's, and I seconded Councilwoman Mosqueta. So let me say, it has been moved and seconded to amend Resolution 32118 as presented on Amendment A. Councilor Mosqueta, you are recognized to address it.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Colleagues, the council members who are assigned onto this amendment, we bring this amendment forward to show common ground in our call for ending bloodshed by calling for a ceasefire in Israel and Palestine. I'm proud that this amendment has been worked on and asked for by a large coalition, an interfaith and community coalition brought forward to ask for an amendment to call for an immediate and long-term ceasefire, the return of all hostages, and the delivery of adequate humanitarian aid to the Palestinian people. It affirms our commitment to combat anti-Semitism, Islamophobia, and anti-Palestinian and anti-Arab bigotry. It underscores our support for the people of both Israel and Palestine to live in peace and security, and the right for all people to live, learn, work, play, pray, and engage in peaceful protests, all without threats, intimidation, or death. The amendment condemns violations of international law, including both the attack on October 7th by Hamas and the Israeli military's response on the 2.3 million Palestinian people living in Gaza, nearly half of whom are children since then. Colleagues, we've received letters and calls of support for this amendment, and a specific letter signed by 68 individuals signing the letter along with 150 organizations. The letter of support for Amendment A reads, "We join Palestinian and Jewish leaders in supporting the resolution via amendment by Juarez, Herbl, and Mosqueta as a way to pass something that focuses on the immediate urgent needs related to stopping and stoppage of the violence and bloodshed, including the killing of children and civilians." The amendment, the letter goes on to say, "The amended resolution would also include the language of the Ceasefire Now resolution led by Congresswoman Cori Bush and Rashida Tlaib, which is in front of our congressmembers right now," end quote. I want to thank Council President Juarez and Councilmember Herbold for being sponsors along with me on this amendment and the work that we've done with community to try to find the common ground to advance this amendment here today. Colleagues, a ceasefire is essential now to stop more deaths, as well as the safe return in exchange of all hostages. Over a month ago, on October 7th, 1,200 innocent Israelis were killed, and since then, now over 12,000 Palestinians have been killed, nearly half of those children. This morning, the Associated Press's headline read, "Gaza's Health Officials Say They Lost the Ability to Count the Dead as Israeli Offense Intensifies." We know that one child is killed every 15 minutes in the Israeli airstrikes on Gaza, according to recent reports by Save the Children. Colleagues, nowhere in the world should it be tolerated to see innocent people targeted, not in refugee camps, not in hospitals, not in pediatric cancer center wards, not in NICUs, and not peacefully outside. Nowhere in the world should collect a punishment through bombing and the elimination of water, food, fuel be tolerated. Nowhere. It would not be tolerated in Israel, and it should not be tolerated in Palestine. This amendment is brought forward with the goal and the intent to add to the voices that are just trying to end the bloodshed and save lives right now. Every day, nearly 500 more people are killed. This is not the time for grandstanding, when finding common ground and uniting around the urgent call for a ceasefire now and the release of all hostages should be our uniting goal. I pledge to continue to work with those to seek a way to advance the efforts to call for a ceasefire now in earnest, and that is what I am doing here today with this amendment with our colleagues. Last month, I called for an immediate ceasefire, and I added my name to the growing list of international leaders, healthcare provider, international humanitarian organizations, community members, elected officials calling for an immediate humanitarian ceasefire, one that is longer than four hours or four days. If we can pass a ceasefire now, a resolution that calls for long-term ceasefire and the return of hostages, the return of humanitarian aid and condemn hate speech, we would be joining other local jurisdictions. Other jurisdictions that have already passed resolutions similar to this include Detroit, Michigan, Atlanta, Georgia, Richmond, California, Providence, Rhode Island, Carboro, North Carolina, Wilmington, Delaware, Akron, Ohio, Chudae, California, Easton, Pennsylvania, Dearborn, Michigan, Dearborn Heights, Michigan, Ypsilanti, Michigan, and Hometromic, Michigan. We would also be joining now 27 members and growing of Congress who have called for a ceasefire, and this includes Jewish member of Congress, Becca Ballint, from Vermont, along with our very own Representative Jayapal. We would be joining international prime ministers and presidents, along with the World Health Organization and other humanitarian organizations globally who are calling for a ceasefire. Colleagues, with this amendment today, we have a chance to pass a resolution, one that calls for an immediate and long-term ceasefire, again, the release of all hostages, the allowance of water, food, and medicine, as well as opening the humanitarian corridors and delivering adequate humanitarian aid. And we do this at the same time that we condemn all hate speech that is escalating here in Seattle and around the globe. This month, the Seattle Times headline said, and I quote, "The Seattle-area Palestinians are watching in horror and fear as Gaza siege continues." The Seattle Times and other news outlets have reported on the impacts of violence that we see radiate from increased anti-Semitic acts of violence as well. We've seen increased anti-Semitic and anti-Arab, anti-Muslim hate and bigotry and threats escalate around Seattle. We've seen synagogues be targeted, we've seen individuals be harassed, and we know that our community is experiencing fear and experiencing vitriol and see hate on the rise. We must not turn against each other, we must not incite further divisiveness and violence. These individuals are not These individuals are not representatives of government. This is an amendment that is condemning acts from government and acts of individual entities and not people. We unilateral, excuse me, we universally condemn antisemitism, Islamophobia, xenophobia, anti-Arab, anti-Palestinian bigotry, and the violence that has resulted as a consequence of the escalation of violence in Israel-Palestine, and we unequivocally condemn those acts here in Seattle and globally. I'll conclude with saying, I, we, I know I, receive calls almost daily from members of the community who are concerned, both from members of their family who are living in Palestine and in Israel. This is an issue that directly affects our local community, as we heard through public comment and the letters that we've received. Acting today and joining the nearly 15 other cities, the 27 members of Congress, international presidents and prime ministers, it is our, it is part of our responsibility to serve members of the community, to find that common ground, to add our voice to the call for a ceasefire, to ensure greater peace and stability, of course, for that region, but for peace and safety and health for our residents as well. The letter that we received, and I'll end with this, Council President concludes, and colleagues, you should have received this letter today as well, it was sent around noon with the 60-some individuals and 150 organizations signed on. It, it concludes, "We firmly believe that the calls set forth in the resolution by Juarez, Herbl, and Mosqueta help bring better safety and well-being for all people living in the region, Palestinians and Israelis alike. A ceasefire and the resolution and the restoration of basic necessities along with humanitarian aid would enable the development of political solutions, including the release and safe return of all hostages, rather than perpetuate violence through military options. In addition, given the rise in antisemitism, Islamophobia, anti-Palestinian and anti-Arab bigotry, the language in the amendment to the resolution helps make it clear that the city of Seattle will not condone such hatred and divisiveness regarding, regardless of where it occurs," end quote. Again, thank you to the community for writing in with support of this and for urging us to find a path forward so that we can find that common ground, pass a resolution, and advance this call. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mosqueta. So I'm going to kind of explain the map here. Councilmember Sawant put forward a resolution. Councilwoman Mosqueta put forward an amendment titled Amendment A. So right now, I'm going to open the floor to my colleagues regarding comments to Councilmember Mosqueta's Amendment A. And Councilwoman Strauss, I see you have your hand up. Please.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, I have a family member in the hospital, and I was planning to visit with them tomorrow, but it is very clear that I need to be visiting. I should have been there hours ago. I learned about this before full council. And I, it is important for me to be here and share my thoughts on this topic in particular, and I really hope that I don't look back on this day and say I should have left this meeting at the beginning of public comment. I've heard a lot of public comments today that speak to an issue that is incredibly personal to me. I'm not going to share my story with you today. I know a lot of people are hurting right now, and the discourse I heard today is not helpful or supportive of our democratic process. The pain that you feel that is transferred through your words lands on people who may be hurting in the same or different ways than you. And just because you're hurting does not give you the prerogative to spread that hurt onto others. Speaking on the resolution, the crimes against humanity that Hamas committed cannot be unanswered. Justice must occur, and that cannot be answered by the immense death and suffering of children and other vulnerable civilians. The violence on October 7th was horrific. The violence over the last month continues this tragedy across families, communities in the world. In the last month, we've seen a rise in antisemitism, Islamophobia, xenophobia. We must all do everything we can to stop this hate from rippling through our communities. I condemn the targeting or killing of civilians, whether Israeli or Palestinian, of any or no faith background. I condemn antisemitism, Islamophobia, and xenophobia. I believe a ceasefire or a pause or whatever you want to call it will benefit the entire world and should happen as soon as possible. This does not mean to cease the overall war or the resolution responding to October 7th's events. This does mean giving time for innocent people to get out of the way to a safer place. The frustration you hear from me today is because I did not receive the time I needed to review this walk-on draft to communicate the content with my community. And moreover, because there are active negotiations occurring right now regarding pausing the conflict to return hostages as well, there have already been pauses for humanitarian needs. And above all else, I do not believe a resolution will move the hand of international negotiations, which are already going in this direction at this point. I do have issues with some of the content in this resolution and walk-on. I do have issues with the process that this language was distributed. I do believe that this world has no place for the hate and violence Hamas leveled on October 7th. And I believe that we need the violence and fighting to take a pause, to let innocent people get out of the way. I'm going to read some words that President Biden wrote this, this week, Council President, if that's okay. In the words of our President Joe Biden, "Our goal should not be to simply stop the war, but to do it should be to end the war forever, break the cycle of unceasing violence, and build something stronger in Gaza and across the Middle East so that history does not keep repeating itself. To have a future that has no place for Hamas's violence and hate." President Biden believes that attempting to destroy the hope for that future is one reason Hamas has instigated this crisis, and this much is clear. A two-state solution is the only way to ensure long-term security for both Israeli and Palestinian people. Though right now it may seem like a future that has never been further away, this crisis has made it more imperative than ever. President Biden goes on to say, "A two-state solution, two peoples living side by side with equal measures of freedom, opportunity, and dignity is where the road to peace must lead. Reaching it will take commitments from Israelis and Palestinians, as well as the United States and our allies and partners, and this work must start now." "That and the United States has proposed basic principles for how to move forward from this crisis to give the world a foundation on which to build. To start, Gaza must never again be used as a platform for terrorism. There must be no forceful displacement of Palestinians from Gaza, no reoccupation, no siege, no blockade, no reduction in territory, and after this war is over, the voices of Palestinian people and their aspirations must be at the center of this post-crisis governance in Gaza," in the words of President Biden. And as President Biden continues, "As we strive for peace, Gaza and the West Bank should be remounted, single governance structure ultimately, under a revitalized Palestinian authority, and we must work toward a two-state solution." President Biden has been empathetic with Israel's leaders that extremist violence, extremist violence against Palestinians in the West Bank must be stopped, and those committing the violence must be held accountable. "The United States is prepared to take our own steps, including issuing visa bans against extremists attacking civilians in the West Bank." President Biden continues that the international committee must, community must commit resources to support the people of Gaza in the immediate aftermath of this crisis, including interim security measures, and establish a reconstruction mechanism to sustainably meet Gaza's long-term needs, and it is imperative that no terrorist threats ever again emanate from Gaza or the West Bank. "If we can agree on these first steps," President Biden writes, "and take them together, we can imagine, we can begin to imagine a different future. In the months ahead, the United Nations will redouble our efforts to establish a more peaceful, integrated, and prosperous Middle East, a region where a day like October 7th is unthinkable, in my words to my children, because I know that this day will never be forgotten. In my words, we must support Biden's effort for cessation of war, hostages must be released, and we must prevent the ongoing destruction and calamity." Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Strauss. Councilwoman Nelson.
Well, so in keeping with my general practice, I'm going to abstain from this resolution because, and this amendment, I might as well just say it all at once, because foreign policy is not my job, and I'm not going to tell members of our congressional delegation how to do their jobs. And, well, I mean, no disrespect to the amendment's cosponsors, but I believe that trying to deal with Councilmember Sawant's resolution by extensively amending it is not an improvement if it doesn't have the support of those it purports to represent or be on common ground with. You might not have noticed it in the inbox, but we received an email today from Max Pachnik of the Jewish Community Relations Council of the Jewish Federation of Greater Air Seattle, representing 35 member organizations, that said, "We ask that you not bring forward either Councilmember Sawant's measure or the substitute for consideration until there's been meaningful, a meaningful effort to engage the leadership of the Jewish community who is deeply and personally impacted by both measures and have not been consulted in either, in any substantive way, substantive way." So my point is, this is very complicated, and my abstentions today don't mean that I don't have strong opinions about these amendments, but I have to be consistent with the position I've taken on similar resolutions in the past involving international policy. Plus, we've got a lot on our plates already here in Seattle, and our constituents want us to focus on our charter duties, and so let's, let's stay in our lane and just do that. And so that is my explanation for the votes that are to come here today.
Thank you, Councilwoman Nelson. Are there any other comments regarding Councilmember Mosqueta's Amendment A? Councilmember Herbl?
Thank you so much, Madam President. Thank you, Councilmember Mosqueta, for being the lead sponsor. Real privilege to join you and Council President Juarez on sponsoring this. If I could just have a moment, I'd like to read the very, very short resolution that is before the House of Representatives. It has been introduced by Representatives Bush, Tlaib, Carson, Lee, Ramirez, Bauman, Coleman, Garcia, Axon, Ocasio-Cortez, Omar, Chesley, and Velasquez. It says simply, "Whereas all human life is precious and the targeting of civilians, no matter their faith or ethnicity, is a violation of international humanitarian law, whereas between October 7th and October 16th, 2023, armed violence has claimed the lives of over 2,700 Palestinians and 1,400 Israelis, including Americans, wounded thousands more." Of course, those numbers are, are being updated. "Whereas hundreds of thousands of lives are at imminent risk if the ceasefire is not achieved and humanitarian is not delivered without delay, and whereas the federal government holds immense diplomatic power to save Israeli and Palestinian lives, be it resolved that the House of Representatives urges the Biden administration immediately call for and facilitate the escalation and a ceasefire to urgently end current violence, and calls upon the humanitarian administration, for the Biden administration to promptly send and facilitate the entry of that humanitarian assistance into Gaza." I'm reading this resolution to make the point that it is a strong resolution. It is a strong resolution because it is narrowly focused on the immediate objectives of a ceasefire, humanitarian aid, and, and freeing, freeing the hostages, and a statement against Islamophobia and, and anti-Muslim sentiment. It, what makes it strong is its focus. A long resolution that, that lists the origins of the conflict, political objectives, information that maybe not everybody agrees with, that does not make a resolution stronger. Our resolution simply states support for a ceasefire, humanitarian aid, return of the hostages, as well as unequivocally condemning any antisemitism or anti-Islamic actions in the country. I believe if you want to effectively call for a ceasefire, you must have a laser focus on the call for the immediate end bloodshed. Again, concepts such as the origins of the conflict, ending all U.S. military funding, and longer-term political objectives like ending the occupation distracts from the call for a ceasefire to the humanitarian crisis right now. This is not a watered-down resolution. It is focused, it is focused on improving the immediate conditions for Gaza's 2.3 million people, 1.7 million of whom have been displaced since the October 7th Hamas attack in Israel, which resulted in the killing of 1,200 Israelis and the capture of 240 hostages. Since then, more than 11,000 people have been killed and besieged Gaza. Strongest statement for peace is a statement that has more council members voting with a unified voice. For those who are insisting on the inclusion of this content beyond these elements of priority, I just, I, I, I hope that you think about the impact of insisting on including language that results in a weaker statement with less support. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Herbl. Again, these are our comments regarding Councilwoman Mosqueta's Amendment A. Councilwoman Morales, I see your hand is up.
Thank you, Council President. I appreciate that this resolution is here. This is a deeply personal issue for me as well. My family has been struggling to make sense of the terrorist acts of Hamas, of the bombardment of Palestinian civilians, and just the sheer horror of what the world is witnessing right now. My temple was one of those that received a package of suspicious white powder in the mail, along with several others across the city. My kids are coming home with stories of Islamophobic language and antisemitic language that's being used at school and are trying to process what it means when it is, in fact, their own friends who are using this kind of language. We all agree that innocent children, innocent civilians should not be suffering the consequences of this bombardment. Journalists shouldn't be targeted for doing their jobs. I am glad to know that there is, seems to be negotiations proceeding to bring Israeli hostages home and to allow for humanitarian aid to get to the Palestinian people. And I do believe that this resolution, as amended by Councilmember Mosqueta, would acknowledge the humanity of both Palestinians and Israelis. It acknowledges the suffering of everyone who's been impacted by this conflict, and it condemns both the attacks by Hamas and the killing of 14,000 innocent civilians. It calls not only for a ceasefire, but for the return of the Israeli hostages, for opening of humanitarian, humanitarian aid corridors, and condemns both antisemitism and Islamophobia and anti-Arab actions. And I will concur with Councilmember Herbl that I do believe that actually makes this a stronger statement, and I will be supporting the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Morales. Now, I'm going to hold my comments till the end. Councilwoman Shaw, Councilwoman Sawant, go ahead. I understand you have an amendment. Councilwoman Sawant? Councilwoman Sawant, I see your hand is up, we cannot hear you, and I'm guessing that you're going to be moving your amendment, Amendment A1, correct?
President Juarez, did you call on me? Yeah.
Yes, we're waiting. Yeah, I know you have an amendment for me.
Thank you. Well, before I move the amendment, I want to speak to the amendment that has been put forward by Councilmember Mosqueta.
Okay.
I have to say, it takes, I have several comments, but, you know, I have to say, it takes a special kind of out-of-touchness to quote President Biden at this moment.
Exactly.
I, I mean, to quote President Biden, to think that it's going to go over well with the anti-war movement. You have to be especially out of touch for that. Councilmembers have said, oh, this is a strong resolution, just calling for ceasefire. It is a strong resolution. It is stronger than refusing to pass anything, which they were going to do, which they did on November 7th. And so this absolutely shows the enormous pressure they are under because their party and their leaders, they don't want them to even call for ceasefire. So, yes, in that sense, you know, as opposed to doing absolutely nothing of courage, yeah, it is strong. I, I'm also stunned that Councilmember Mosqueta quotes the resolutions that were passed by the city councils in Ypsilanti, Michigan, and Richmond, California, as if that's support for her watered-down resolution. But the city councils in both these cities called out the U.S. funding. They said, "We don't..." They said, "We don't want U.S. funding for the Israeli state." So either these Democrats need to do better research, or they're deliberately trying to fool people because they think we haven't done our research. And for Councilmember Herbl to say that if our resolution, which calls for not only ceasefire, but rejects, wants, calls for an end to U.S. funding for the Israeli state, and calls for an end to occupation, is a weaker statement, I am sorry, that is rank political gaslighting.
Councilmember Sawant, I'm going to ask that you come and move your amendment.
I'm sorry, I have to speak to this amendment.
I understand, but we're also waiting for your amendment.
I'm going to speak. There was a ceasefire in 1949 after the war, after the Nakba, that displaced 750,000 Palestinians and led to the establishment of the State of Israel. There was a ceasefire, let me speak, there was a ceasefire in 1956 after the Israeli military invaded Sinai with the support of British and French imperialism. There was a ceasefire in 1967 after the Six-Day War, in which Israel captured and occupied the West Bank, East Jerusalem, Gaza Strip, and the Golan Heights. There was a ceasefire in 1973 after Arab countries attacked Israel in the Yom Kippur War, and Israel counterattacked. There was a ceasefire in 2006 after the Second War in Lebanon, which lasted 50 days between Hezbollah and Israel. There was a ceasefire in 2008 between Israel and Hamas that held for five months until it was broken by Israel on election day in America, when Obama was elected to launch Operation Cast Lead. There was a ceasefire in 2009 after Israel launched attacks on Gaza. In 2012, Israel assassinated a senior Hamas official, Ahmad Jabari. He was the one responsible for negotiating the ceasefires with Israel. And at the moment he was assassinated, he was in the midst of negotiating a quote-unquote "long-term ceasefire." The assassination kicked off Operation Pillar of Defense, yet another horrific episode, which the Israeli military cynically called "mowing the lawn." There was a ceasefire in 2021 after an 11-day war. There was a ceasefire in 2022 after another outbreak of hostilities. Of course, I support another ceasefire, but I urge councilmembers to think about what this entire litany of history means. If Democrats, if all Democrats do is call for ceasefire but fail to demand an end to the occupation, an end to U.S. military aid, then they will simply be giving license to another future conflict, another war. That is not what the Palestinian people want or need, and it falls far short of what our anti-war movement is demanding. More than 56 years ago, in the immediate wake of the Six-Day War, in which Israel captured Gaza, the West Bank, East Jerusalem, and the Golan Heights, and the Golan Heights, Mats Ben, an organization of Israeli socialists, published a plea in Haaretz, one of the leading Israeli daily newspapers. It read, quote, "Our right to defend ourselves from extermination does not give us the right to oppress others. Occupation leads to foreign rule. Foreign rule leads to resistance. Resistance leads to repression. Repression leads to terror and counterterrorism. The victims of terror are mostly innocent people. Holding on to the occupied territories will turn us into a nation of murderers and murder victims. We must leave the occupied territories immediately," end quote. That was from socialists. I also want to highlight the problems with not calling for an end to U.S. military funding. Where do we think all the military funding goes? This is where it goes. It goes for thousands of tanks, hundreds of artillery pieces, hundreds of combat-capable aircraft, that include hundreds of fighter ground-attack jets, dozens of Apache attack helicopters, hundreds of total helicopters as a whole, just countless amounts of naval power, submarines, radar control launchers. All of this firepower of the fourth-largest military in the world to shed the blood of innocent people and children in Gaza. This is what U.S. imperialism is responsible for. I also, just lastly, I also want to talk about what has been the reality in Gaza for more than, you know, for many decades, for more than 2 million Palestinians. I mean, the Palestinians have all this sophisticated weaponry trained at them 24/7. They are trapped there under the tight control of Israeli naval and land forces, completely surrounding and blockading the population. Newsweek recently detailed the staggering extent of this imprisonment. So I'm quoting Newsweek now, it's not a socialist publication. Quote, "Israel had sunk more than $1 billion into a high-tech border barrier along Gaza, which was completed in 2021. The so-called Iron Wall consists of walls and fencing that not only rise as much as 20 feet above the ground, but also sink deeply into it to make it harder to tunnel beneath. The boundary boasts a staggering array of sophisticated equipment, including hundreds of night vision cameras, seismic sensors to pick up tunneling sounds from deep below, thermal sensors to detect body or vehicle heat, and radar to spot flying threats. Mobile robots sometimes patrol the perimeter. Small blimps and drones often look down from above. And automated machine guns on top of the walls can be fired from remote installations or triggered by sensor alerts to fire on their own with AI doing the aiming," end quote. This is like a very, very dystopian science fiction film, but this has been the life of the people in Gaza. So I, of course, oppose this amendment, but I move, I want to move amendments to this, I want to make two motions now, to amend this proposal from Councilmembers Mosqueta, Juarez, and Herbl. I move Amendment 1 to substitute Amendment A as emailed to Council at 11:55 a.m. this morning, 35 minutes after Councilmember Mosqueta sent us her language. This amendment simply adds the line, quote, "and an end to the Israeli occupation and subjugation of Palestinian lands," end quote, in the list of what Council supports Section 2. Can I have a second?
It's been moved and seconded to amend A as presented on Amendment 1. So now, Councilmember Sawant, you can speak to your Amendment 1 in response to Councilmember Mosqueta's Amendment A. And Councilmember Sawant, I'm not trying to stop you from speaking, but you've spoken well over 25 minutes. So if you can speak to your amendment, and then we'll have a vote on it, and then I know you have another second amendment teed up, so go ahead.
I don't need to speak more to this amendment. I've already spoken to this amendment, but after the vote, I do have another motion, as you know.
Okay. So it has been moved and seconded to amend Amendment A as presented on Amendment 1. That was Councilmember Sawant, you all heard it. So I'm going to ask if there's any comments to Councilmember Sawant's Amendment 1. If not, then we will go to a vote. All right. I do not see any...
Councilmember, Council President.
Yes. Do you have a comment to Councilmember Sawant's Amendment 1?
I do. Thank you, Council President.
All right.
Council President, thanks so much. I'm going to speak to this one and the next amendment that was sent around as a walk-on. Colleagues, I know that there was a lot of conversations around these two items. I feel that it is really, these are very important elements of the broader picture. But again, as Councilmember Herbl spoke to, the intent here was to find that common ground so ultimately the council can advance a piece of legislation that focuses on the immediate. I personally have already called for not only ending the decades-long occupation, but also I do not support funding additional, additional funding continuing to go to Israel at this point, given the issues that we've seen with international law. So I've been clear on those issues. I'll continue to act in solidarity with members of the Palestinian community and the broader interfaith community that are raising these issues. Again, today, the legislation, the amendment to the resolution in front of us was drafted with the common ground theme, and given that we have sought to find this path forward with this legislation in front of us as amended, I'm hoping to keep that intact. I will be abstaining on this amendment, Council President, and for the purpose of keeping the amendment intact.
Okay. So with that, will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of Councilmember Sawant's Amendment 1 to Councilmember Mosqueta's Amendment A?
Councilmember Mosqueta?
Abstain.
Councilmember Nelson?
Abstain.
Councilmember Peterson?
No.
Councilmember Sawant?
Yes.
Councilmember Strauss?
No.
Councilmember Herbl?
No.
Councilmember Lewis?
No.
Councilmember Morales?
No.
And Council President Juarez?
No.
One in favor? Six opposed and two abstentions.
All right, so the motion fails. Amendment 1 is not adopted. So are there any other comments on the resolution? I believe Councilmember Sawant has something for us.
So sorry, just double-checking. That was Amendment, walk-on Amendment 1 to Amendment 1. I just wanted to confirm that. Okay.
Yeah, and then Councilmember Sawant is going to tee up her second amendment. Councilmember Sawant?
Yes, I move Amendment 2 to substitute Amendment A also emailed to Council at 11:55 a.m. this morning, 35 minutes after Councilmember Mosqueta sent us her language. This amendment adds a Section 4 to the be it resolved as follows. "Section 4, the Seattle City Council opposes all U.S. military aid to Israel and believes those billions of dollars in military resources are enabling this war and occupation and greatly increasing the danger of a wider regional war. The Seattle City Council urges the U.S. Congress to oppose further funding for the Israeli military and requests that the Office of Intergovernmental Relations convey this position to Seattle's congressional delegation."
Okay, Councilmember Sawant, I'm going to give you a second. I know you spoke to it, but I just seconded it for you. You just made your comments, so I seconded it. So I'm going to open the floor for your colleagues now. Councilmember Herbl?
Thank you, Madam President. This is just to speak to this amendment, as well as the other, just, I think councilmembers are aware that former Councilmember Nick Locata was with us earlier. His remarks were delivered to councilmembers, but I would like to get them on the record because I think they speak well to both of these amendments.
All right.
Thank you. He writes, "I strongly support the resolution by Councilmembers Juarez, Herbl, and Mosqueta. Their resolution is not a watering down of Sawant's resolution. It is a separate issue." And then to the point of the amendment proposed by Councilmember Sawant to the amended version, Councilmember Locata goes on to say, "I understand the legitimate concern that Sawant and supporters of her resolution to oppose military aid to Israel, but that is not the issue here. Military aid to Israel is a crucial item to debate and to discuss, but rapping a demand that all military aid stop now is as likely to be acceptable to Israel as asking Iran to cease funding all military aid fundamentalist seek to destroy Israel. Path to a long-term ceasefire and achieving a groundwork for moving to a peaceful negotiated settlement is ending this war. If passed, the substitute resolution could have national attention, would be a sensible and realistic solution forward. It would bridge stop military funding both sides. Most importantly, it would be a step forward securing a safe Israel as an independent nation in the Middle East and a separate democratic Palestinian state without Israeli interference in its domestic policies." Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Herbl. Are there any other comments to Councilmember Sawant's Amendment Number 2 to Councilmember Mosqueta's Amendment A before we go to a vote? Not seeing any? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of Amendment 2 to Councilmember Mosqueta's Amendment A?
Councilmember Mosqueta?
Abstain.
Councilmember Nelson?
Abstain.
Councilmember Peterson?
No.
Councilmember Sawant?
Yes.
Councilmember Strauss?
No.
Councilmember Herbl?
No.
Councilmember Lewis?
No.
Councilmember Morales?
No.
And Council President Juarez?
No.
That's one in favor, six opposed, and two abstentions.
Motion fails, and Amendment 2 is not adopted. So are there any further comments on Councilmember Mosqueta's Amendment A? I have some comments, but I'm going to wait till I hear from my colleagues.
President Juarez, can I just clarify one quick thing?
Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Sawant, and then I will speak after you.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify to all the people who are here that the vote right now is on adopting the watered-down amendment as the resolution, so I will be voting no. But then, after that, will come the final vote for whatever the resolution is at that moment. So I just wanted to be clear.
Okay, well, okay. So before we go to a vote on Councilmember Mosqueta's Amendment A, as amended, I want to share a few words in nothing that Councilmember Mosqueta, and Councilmember Herbl, and Councilmember Strauss, and Councilmember Sawant have already shared collectively. All of us have been concerned, and more than concerned, and understand the history, well before October 7th. I want to say from just a personal perspective that this whole, the dust, as we say, the dust of peace will not settle today. This resolution, as Councilmember Herbl pointed out, as well as Councilmember Mosqueta, thank you for working, all of us together, has been peace. It has been laser-focused on a ceasefire, stop the killing, humanitarian aid, and return the hostages. I do not believe it's a watered-down amendment. The resolution, our intent, is about our humanity for life and not to further the pain and trauma of Muslim and Jewish communities, people, and children. Our relatives on their soil, 7,000 miles away, we pray for all human life, and today we have the privilege of distance. We are not there. We're not in this war zone. But we do share the pain and the trauma of our relatives, of what is happening, whether you're Muslim or Jewish or other folks that are there in harm's way and are being killed. And I do believe that we would love a collective voice that the city of Seattle wants to stop the killing. Some of the more difficult issues, Councilmember Sawant, that were in your first resolution on October 7th, and then today, I agree with Councilmember Herbl, a lot of them are arguable, they're political, and they're not going to be settled today. But one thing that we can strive for and be supportive of to our city, to our state delegation, or congressional delegation, is we are united with the people, the civilians, for a peaceful and for this war to end. I don't want people to feel that if some folks are silent, that that means they're indifferent. I know the saying is that the better part of valor is discretion. Well, I was also raised that the better part of valor is also silence and prayer and to listen. And I want something that brings us together for once, and I think this recognition is a recognition that we care about our brothers and sisters and relatives in a country, in a land on soil 7,000 miles away. So for that reason, I will be voting yes on Councilmember Mosqueta's amendment. And I should add that we had done our homework as well. We not only looked at, and I'm not going to fault Councilmember Strauss for citing President Biden, and I want to thank former Councilmember Nick Locata and his words, but we also did our homework to know how many people have died, how many people are being held hostage, that we don't just need a humanitarian pause, we need a longstanding ceasefire. We looked at United Nations, 18 United Nations agencies condemning this war. We looked at... United Nations agencies condemning this war. We looked at WHO, the World Health Organization, UNICEF, the High Commission for Refugees. And for those of you out there, some of us, being Catholic, also look to our Pope, or whatever that means. So a ceasefire is a suspension of the fighting agreed to by both parties to allow people to engage in a dialogue for a permanent solution to end the conflict. We have our own opinions about Israel and dismantling Hamas. We have our own opinions, but I think we all agree that we can no longer have deaths of civilians who just happened to be there. And though we are in Seattle, Washington, as you heard some of our public, our folks who came to public comment, we are 7,000 miles away from this soil, but we are all under God and the Creator's light. And that's what we wanted to do. So I don't know how many pauses add up to a ceasefire, but I know today the city of Seattle collectively says, "Stop." And that's where my heart is, my mind is, and that's why I'm joining Councilmember Herbold and Councilmember Mosqueta. And I appreciate their words. And Councilmember Sawant, on a personal note, I want the public to know that you and I had a great opportunity to speak today a couple times, and I appreciate what you've done. I appreciate your words, your passion. But I really don't think it's fair to impugn your colleagues, because I think at the end of the day, I know at the end of the day, all of us want the same thing. And a particular, a particular note of concern and love goes out to Councilmember Strauss, that I know this is his community, Councilmember Morales, who I've spoken to and heard what she has dealt with at her synagogue and with her children. And so this isn't about picking sides. It's about just supporting a resolution that says, "Stop the killing." So for that reason, I will be supporting, of course, Amendment A to Councilmember Sawant's resolution. So with that, is there anything you want to add, Councilmember Mosqueta, before we go to A, because we're going to vote on your Amendment A, before we go to the vote?
No, thank you, Council President. You said it well. I think that's a good closing comment.
I hope we can all move together in a good way, because that's how I was raised. With that, will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of Amendment A as amended? I mean, I'm sorry, Amendment A?
Councilmember Mosqueta.
Hi.
Councilmember Nelson.
Abstain.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Sawant.
No.
Councilmember Strauss.
Yes.
Councilmember Herbold.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Morales.
Yes.
And Council President Juarez.
Yes.
Seven in favor, one opposed, and one abstention.
Thank you. The motion carries. Amendment A is adopted. So with that, are there any further comments before we call the roll on the amended? Not seeing any. Will the clerk please call the roll? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Sawant.
Thank you. I think it's very, very important for us as activists in the anti-war movement and as working people to always take stock of political events and to learn lessons. Lesson number one today is, if this resolution passes calling for ceasefire, it is our victory, and we claim it. In less than 15 days' time, we, we forced these Democrats who were, who were, who felt free to not even speak on our resolution on November 7, to bring a resolution on ceasefire. This is hugely important. And for a ceasefire resolution to get passed in a city as prominent as Seattle, this is historic, and this could be precedent-setting. And so it's very, very important that afterwards, after this vote, that none of you leave, and that we have sort of a quick, have a quick rally where we discuss immediately what our next step should be, because we cannot rest on what we win. We have to continue fighting back. And if, and if today, if today has taught us anything, it should teach us that when we fight, we can win. So let's keep fighting. Today, I think it's important for us to, you know, in terms of, we will talk more about next steps in a bit, but I wanted to just quickly say that it's very important, you know, it's, yes, it is important for all of us, millions of us globally, to be marching in anti-war movements, but that's not going to be enough. The Vietnam War wasn't ended simply because people marched. It was ended because millions were marching with the correct understanding of the strategy and tactics that were needed for the movement. And it was defeated, both obviously because active soldiers were rebelling, but also because the labor movement and rank-and-file union members took this up as a fight that affects the labor movement. And so I wanted to just quickly say that, I mean, it's, it's important that the unions that have passed resolutions, and many of those resolutions stronger than what these Democrats are willing to pass, let's be clear. That's all very important, but, but the, but workers and union members need to go much farther. The labor movement needs to mobilize the rank-and-file and organize protests and strike actions to take the anti-war movement forward. A crucial tactic is workers refusing to manufacture or transport weapons shipments to Israel. For example, for example, the Boeing Corporation, which is, you know, in our, in our backyard, is one of the suppliers of bombs to Israel, having recently sent 1,000 bombs over there. Boeing workers, we need to send a message to Boeing workers who are members of the Machinist Union, the SPEA Aerospace Engineers Union, and other unions, that they need to organize protests against sending bombs to kill the people of Gaza, and that they should refuse to work in favor of the Israeli war machine and U.S. imperialism. And as many of you have already said here, the labor movement as a whole should demand that the whopping $106 billion that Biden wants to spend on wars across the world, from Ukraine to Gaza, should be spent on the urgent needs of working and poor people in the United States, including living wages, healthcare, funding for public schools, affordable housing, and childcare services. And, yeah, I, you know, I just wanted to say thank you to everybody who stayed so late, and we showed them that movements have huge potential. They don't want to see that, but we showed them.
Thank you, Councilmember Sawant. Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the resolution as amended?
Councilmember Mosqueta.
Hi.
Councilmember Nelson.
Abstain.
Councilmember Peterson.
Abstain.
Councilmember Sawant.
Yes.
Councilmember Strauss.
Yes.
Councilmember Herbold.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Abstain.
Councilmember Morales.
Yes.
And Council President Juarez.
Yes.
Six in favor, three abstentions.
Resolution is adopted as amended, and the chair will sign it. Madam Clerk, please fix my signature to the legislation on my behalf. We're not done yet, folks. We're almost done. We're almost there. Is there any other business to come before council? Not seeing any. If there's no objection, oh, there is, one thing, me. Is there, if there's no objection, I would like to be excused from the city council meeting on December 5. Not seeing any objection. I will indeed excuse myself. Colleagues, it is 7:01, and that concludes our items of business. Thank you all for being so patient. I really appreciate it with the budget and everything else. And I know it was a long day, and I appreciate all the work, all of you. The next regularly scheduled city council meeting is scheduled for November 28. Thank you all for your hard work.